So this is going to be a meeting of the Committee of the Whole for the City of Urbana. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, great. Let's see, now we have the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. Is there anybody who would like to make the motion? I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, I'll give that to Dean Hazen, I think. Because he's so close to me. All right. Were there any corrections or comments? None? Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're approving the minutes. All right, additions to the agenda, and I believe there is one. Mayor, would you like to comment on it?
Yes, I would like to add as item 13, a discussion of the IHSA bid package. This is discussion only.
Is there anybody, well, see, what do we need to approve that? Do we need to have a?
We need a motion.
A motion, okay.
I'll make a motion to add the item.
Second.
Okay. Chair Miller and?
Chirice.
Yeah, Chirice. All right, any opposition? Any more comments? No comments. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, we're adding that to the agenda near the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, we have presentations and public input. We do have a public input. Do we have a presentation this evening? No, we don't. All right, so there are a few people who would like to comment on one of the topics at this time before it comes up actually for a discussion. So I'll just go through my list here. Stephanie Smith, would you like to come over? Come forward. You have maximum five minutes.
Does it matter which microphone?
No, I think they should just get to one, close to one of them. Thank you. And this is about the school resource officer topic, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Stephanie Smith. I'm an Urbana resident. I have kids in Urbana Public Schools. A well-researched and diplomatic letter was ignored by the school board. They aren't listening to our concerns, needs, or data. I will not rehash what others have said. ProPublica stated USD 116 had used isolated timeouts for years. I could not find any information on it in any manual or handout as required by state law, but the FOIA request was noted on a public meeting agenda back in January. The UN's mandala rules state that solitary confinement should never be used with youth and those with mental or physical disabilities or illness. The school district committed human rights abuses against our children. How can we trust they have stopped when they hadn't informed us it was even happening? You want to add additional officers on the district's dime. Meanwhile, we lack in resources and have massive gaps in care, transparency, and accountability. The biggest risk factors for child sex trafficking are involvement in the juvenile criminal justice system, the foster system, and poverty. This relates to survival sex. You are investing in and creating the conditions for our exploitation, and our community is in denial. Defy Gravity tried to profit off of teaching children ages eight to 12 sex work this summer, and Smile Politely promoted it without an ounce of criticism. Defy Gravity has been teaching older minors pole dancing for years, I learned. Sexual performance by a minor falls under child sex trafficking laws. It's also how I got my start in underage survival sex at 15. Employees shared by races and Defy Gravity harassed me in person, in community groups, online, and even went as far as inciting violent threats, calling from my knees to be busted with lead pipes for speaking out. I had to file a grievance and leave my volunteer position. My abusers are still employed at races. Races does not have trainings or services dedicated to child sex trafficking survivors or sex workers. The director suggested I look at the Children's Advocacy Center. The state's attorney at the CAC annual meeting told me that they do not screen for trafficking, that it doesn't happen here. They only investigate and refer. It was within the purview of Races' responsibility. They had no knowledge of the Illinois Human Trafficking Task Force report from 2018 and the recommendations of law enforcement, DCFS, et cetera, contained within. There was no report released in 2019. I attempted to reach out to my representative as she was on the task force to ask why no report had been released. Her staffer flippantly responded with irrelevant electoral matters. I will not play idiotic political games with the lives of survivors. My allegiance lies with the vulnerable and the suffering, the marginalized, criminalized, and hunted. Members of our community have been tortured and murdered by those tasked with protecting us. Your vote on this will demonstrate whether you are committed to just futures, or if you would prefer to profit off the exploitation of vulnerable people. If you vote against our human rights, may you drown in dishonor.
All right, the next person who would like to come up and have a comment would be Alan
Hi, my name is Alan Exrodt. I live at 814 Sunset Drive, Unit 3. Intergovernmental agreements don't come out of nowhere. They don't come out of thin air. There are expectations that are set, sometimes months in advance, and it's viewed as important that governmental agencies establish reliable and coherent relationships with each other. I would instead urge that there be reliable and coherent relationships with the people who come to speak. The people who have suffered. My neighbor, at the age of 14, was incarcerated, was in juvenile detention. The psychological trauma from that wasn't even hard to spot. His little brother was talking to him, saying, "But you weren't here. You weren't here." To which he responds, "I don't care. They can take me back." So when we're looking at school resource officers, we should look at what their roles are. Because the Urbana School District said during their meeting where they then voted to fund school resource officers, that it's not their duty to actually intervene in fights. So we should be clear, what is their duty when we are approving their role? They definitely are able to incarcerate folks and charge them with crimes when they are supposed to be in a space that's supposed to encourage them to feel welcomed and to find restorative means for addressing transgressions and trauma in the community. We could fund social workers, real social workers. We could fund guidance counselors. We can invest in our community. I just don't know if this is the way to do it. Because the effects that it has on the people who, right or wrong, are charged with a crime is something that puts them on a path where they are disaffected, non-engaging, and not interested in doing what most of us would consider to be constructive. Because they have no one to help them handle their trauma and everyone telling them that they are wrong, that they are the problem with our community. That's incredibly damaging. I tried to get my same neighbors to go to the Boys to Men program because that's what we should do, right? Take folks who are negatively impacted by incarceration or at risk of incarceration and try to connect them to community resources. It's a lot harder to do that retroactively than it is to do preventatively. Especially with a family that doesn't have reliable transportation and with neighbors who are overcommitted. So I ask that when we consider this proposal, to value the community more so than another unit of government. Thank you.
And one other individual? One other individual wishes to speak at this time.
Hi there, everyone. My name is Ben Jocelyn. I work at the University of Illinois. I live here in Urbana. I grew up here in Urbana. I fought with my brother in school in Urbana, and I didn't get arrested. I say that kind of glib, but it's true. I mean, we know that schools that have more cops than them aren't safer. The numbers bear that out. We know that kids that are, kids that go to schools that have more cops than them are more likely to end up being punished by the criminal justice system, going to juvenile detention centers, or sometimes tried as adults. We know that those folks who go to juvenile detention centers are more likely to go and spend more of their life in jail, and we know that folks who spend some time in jail are more likely to spend more of their life in jail. This is a system that throws people's lives away. It puts people on paths to not be successful. We know that in schools where there aren't as many cops, conflicts are resolved without the criminal justice system being involved, that we have more chances for restorative justice, for preventative justice. We know that the people who intervene in those cases have spent their lives training to be good to children. Counselors' purpose is to grow and nurture children through their lives and to provide them the resources they need. Teachers have spent years in school learning how to address and evaluate students' needs and to make their lives better. We know that it's proven that smaller class sizes, if you pay for more teachers, I mean, $300,000 for more cops goes to four or more individuals who've been trained to make students' lives more successful, right? They've spent their entire careers learning how to grow and nurture children. It's what we want in our schools. It's what we want in our lives. Cops have one special sort of community-wide and like societally-accepted sort of skill, and that's violence. They're the only group of people we train to do violence. And I don't see this as any different than the violence that one parent or community may strike another. Like, the way that we tear away people from their families and isolate them in juvenile detention centers and jails is robbing them of their lives and of their freedoms and their, the very essence of childhood. So it's not sort of educationally reasonable to look at the money we could spend on teachers or counselors and instead spend it on cops because we don't get any of the outcomes. It's not socially responsible to spend it on police officers because we don't get any of the outcomes. It's shown that it's not safer, and it's shown that they're not even there to break up fights. It's not morally responsible because we're here to nurture our children. That's our goal as a city body. That's our goal as a community. And if instead we say, "No, we're okay with investing in another way to throw your lives
All right, another individual who'd like to speak is James Kilgore.
Good evening. I'm James Kilgore, 602 East Harding Drive in Urbana. Speaking here tonight is the co-director of First Followers Reentry Program. We provide support and opportunities to people returning home from prison, and we're grateful to the support of the City of Urbana in our efforts. I'm here tonight to speak on the issue of additional SROs in Urbana schools. I think as First Followers, we kind of deal with people at the other end of the school-to-prison pipeline. We deal with people who have started off likely with serious disciplinary problems in schools, which in the era of mass incarceration end up being recorded in ways that are very similar to criminal offenses and begin to compile the criminal jacket that ultimately, where one thing leads to another, and people end up spending considerable times in prison as they move along, as they move along that pipeline. This is the process of mass incarceration. I think, I think it's important to connect this, to connect what's being considered here to the issue of mass incarceration. Because we think of mass incarceration as locking people up, but there's a different approach to defining that. And I view mass incarceration as the attempt to solve social, political, economic, racial justice, problems of poverty and inequality through punishment, rather than providing resources and support. And so what we find in the era of mass incarceration, because we know that what's happened in the era of mass incarceration is we've seen the United States become the most punitive society in the world. We've seen this incredible increase in people in prisons and jails, but yet we've seen an incredible decline in public housing. We've seen an incredible decline in the provision of mental health services. We've seen an incredible decline in the provision of substance abuse treatment programs. We're putting people without houses into jail. We're putting people with mental health issues into jails. We're putting people with substance abuse issues into jail instead of finding ways to address their problems. And I think when I hear about the response to a fight, to conflicts in schools, and the solution is to throw police at that, we are repeating 40 years of very bad history. We're having a knee-jerk reaction to an incident that the institutions and many people in the community don't understand, but they know that there's a ready-made solution to all of these problems. And that's more police, more punishment, more law enforcement. We need to back up from that solution. We've been over 40 years down that road of mass incarceration, and it hasn't taken us anywhere positive. And, I mean, I can say, sitting there watching people come through the prison system that have done 10, 20, 30 years there. What has been accomplished? How has the public and the community been safer by locking people, by locking people away? So I really, I really would like to see the City of Urbana not rush to judgment here. We've rushed to judgment in the past around issues of violence. We rushed to judgment in the, in the 1990s around the super predator crisis, and we built a juvenile detention center that sat empty for, primarily empty for about three years. So let's, instead of looking to punishment, instead of looking to policing, let's look to processes that heal. Let's look to process that, processes that are restorative, not punitive. Let's look at processes that address the structural racism that, that underlies all this. And I think particularly in a state where 15% of the population is black and 56% of the prison population is black.
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Kilgore.
In a county where 13% of the population is black, but yet 50 to 70% of the jail population is black, how can we be addressing the problem of conflict in schools, a conflict that primarily involves black students, without addressing that issue fundamentally, other than by throwing more police at it? So I hope you'll think big picture. Think about the implications of spending $300,000 on this and find many better ways to spend that money besides policing. Thank you.
Okay, we have three more people who wish to speak.
Greetings. My name is Ricardo Diaz, and I live on Main Street here in Urbana. I am the, one of the signers of the letter that circulated that didn't make it to the Board of Education, to the school board. And I have one correction to make because as the letter was written, I was, I started to get informed, but I was very convinced by the arguments that were placed in that letter, the documentation. I went down and read some of them. But my correction is this: I am not against police participating in the process and especially the SROs as many of the functions that they do I see as very good. As I've talked to several friends and people in the system, SROs play a part in the, in the school. What I am against is having SROs acting like policemen at the school and carrying weapons like guns at the school. Educational institutions have the nobler cause for a reason, and while I understand that times have changed since I've gone, I went to school, I still have children in the system, and I know how they feel about guns and when they are present so readily with any individual at the school. I do believe in the system of dialogue and in the process in which the city is, as a Committee of the Whole, before it goes on to the next level. And I appreciate this, this opportunity to discuss and to look at some of them. It is not easy, I understand, but dialogue and the opportunities to talk to each other and learn from each other are actually very few in, in town. And what you have before you in a proposal today, I know it was generated, I know it's been internally supported for a while, I believe that the proposal still yet has more discussion to be done. It barely passed the school board, and had that letter and had the information been before more people, I believe that it would have taken a little bit longer. And because now, as I've talked to other friends, as I've talked to school people, I understand their support for SROs, but when it comes to the details of this relationship between the city and the school, I believe that there's still more to be done. And so I urge you to look at it, amend it as required, send it back, and do a little bit more back and forth as we learn more. I also urge you, as you read the studies, that you also keep in mind, stats go back and forth, but the relationship here locally is unique in that we have a strong police department, we have strong schools, we are doing better. And certainly in this situation in which we have enough controversy to get us out and complicate your lives a little bit more, we can do better. So let's slow it down a little bit. Let's look at the provisions, and let's work at it together so we can do better. Thank you.
Okay, next is Jamie Olson. Did you want to come forward?
Hi, I'm Jamie Olson. I have a 4th grader at Yankee Ridge. I have six grade twins at their middle school. And I talked about this with them earlier this evening, just, I asked them what they thought about bullying and about violence in schools, and that there was a decision made that I disagreed with, but I didn't tell them what that was. I wanted to hear their views, so I'm going to represent my children. They said that violence in school needs to be taken seriously, and they would like to see more adults in place within their schools, and that an increase of adults might make it, A, more likely that people would not get away with something, and B, make a safe place for more kids. I asked them if they were thinking, and I said, "That is the solution, is adding more adults." What type of adults would be helpful? Neutral, where there's just more people present and responsible so that they can watch and see what's happening? A negative presence, which would be punitive? Or a positive presence, which could be restorative and make a way for whatever the underlying things that are impacting our children at these schools, to process that and heal? And I did not say the police would be punitive and counselors would be positive, but we know that that is true. And they said that having people who could help them process and help their friends process. And then I said what the decision was from the school board, and that it wasn't agreed upon, and that it was important to me to come and speak into this. And my daughter, who looks exactly like me, super white, super blonde, blue eyes, said, "Mom, lots of people don't feel safe with police. The police will create more unsafety by being more present because so many people who have dark skin are not going to feel safe because there is," and she went on, and I'll just rephrase, "We have a history in our community, we have a history in our nation, we have a history throughout," someone mentioned, "40 years, it's gone farther back." I agree with my daughter that the presence of more police will not de-escalate the crises that our kids are experiencing. It will escalate them. Having, I agree with Ricardo, that having more weapons on each campus is not going to de-escalate, it's going to escalate just by the presence of them being there. Having more adults is a great solution, but I think that those adults need to be trained, and I, I forget what I worded on my paper, but you can have adults who are trained in restoration, or you can have adults who are trained in management of behavior, as in shutting it down. And that is not going to address what our children are facing. Someone who is being hurt then turns and hurts others. So we need to talk about what are the things happening in our community structurally, racially, economically, that are causing our kids to feel unsafe? And school may be the one place they feel safe, and then if we're going to escalate that situation rather than de-escalate it, then we are dis-servicing our children. And my kids don't feel unsafe around police officers, but they are very concerned on behalf of their friends and any classmates who are not white because of the history that we have. And I think that's an important consideration. I appreciate that they hold that view, since it's not necessarily impactful to them. And I think since the majority of you are white, it is important for you to show that same respect for the percentage of people in our community who are not represented right here in this room and whose voice needs to be heard and who may not feel that they would be heard. So I'm here to speak on that. My children are speaking out on that.
Ms. Olson, you have 30 seconds.
Yes, thank you. And this is of critical importance. This is critically important. We have to pause this decision, and we need to change it eventually, but we have to pause it. This is not acceptable moving forward, at least without widespread community support. And if we can't raise that toward adding police officers to our schools, then we should not take that route. I have not heard support for it.
The next person would be Allison Martel.
Hello there. My name's Allison. I've been a community member in town for about 11 years now. I'm a stand-up comedian. I heard a lot of very eloquent things to say. I don't have jokes, and I don't have as many eloquent things to say, so I'm going to try to keep this brief. I came here because I heard about this decision to increase police presence in town, and it made me very angry. I do not think that this is going to keep children safe. I think it's going to endanger them. I think it's going to criminalize them. I think this contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline. And I'm not going to be quiet about it. I don't think the community is going to be quiet about it. It got their attention. They're talking about it, and I haven't heard any support for this at all. I just want to, to make it known. I just wanted to make it known. Thank you. to, to make it known. I just wanted to make it known. Thank you.
Okay, and the last one for this time period, James Corbin.
All right, thank you. My name is James Corbin. I work with First Followers, and I'm also a mentor and a mentee for the program, and I work with a lot of the young black males. We Go Mad and a couple of other programs. First, I would just like to start off and offer you a perspective from a black male, how this is seen or viewed. And second, I would like to ask the question, before this was decided on, was there any study to see if this, how this would prove out? And two reasons why I say those things. The first reason is, well, as a black male, police officers are viewed as occupying force, not as somebody that you look to as, hey, can I call this guy? Because it's usually not, it's, it's not going to turn out good most of the time, so they're not looking at that. There's other ways that we could do this without having that presence of authority. You could have other males, which there is a lack of black males in the school system at this time. I just met with Jorge today, and we was talking about that. I said, well, how many, you know, how many is in there now? And I think he says two. So a lot of this is not so much as violence, or it's more of a cultural sort of misidentity, because when you are speaking with one of the younger males, they seem to come off aggressive, and that's taken as some as a threat. But in, in these type of communities, and I'm originally from Chicago, I had to sort of reprogram myself in order to understand, you know, how, you know, my thought pa, or speech pattern that is not a threat. That makes sense? Yeah. So, and that's, and you get a lot of that. You're getting a lot of this, because I, I came up to the school and talked to a couple of the teachers for a couple of young guys, and it was simply just a misunderstanding. One, he, the young, one young man lacked the communication skills to really get his point across, but he's trying to use, you know, his basic way, but they don't have that, they don't have the tool set yet to do that. So that's something we need to think about. It was a good study I read. It was from Oakland Unified School District, and the study talked about how they did restorative practices in the school, in Oakland Unified School District, and had these really magnificent results. They didn't have to bring in more officers. That, they just brought in these practices. And they also did add more male mentors in the process. Now, this didn't cost them nothing to do. This didn't cost two hundred thousand or three. They just added more male mentors to talk to these guys and to be that go-between, and see what other issues are going. And they had a double, it doubled the rate of graduates, and it also increased the rate of grades. The grades went up just from doing that, a simple thing. So I say that to, you know, really think about this, because more of a, a presence of authority, you already have an issue against that. There's ways we could work within the system, you know, our organization, other organizations, self-makings, they are there to help with that. And I, I would just like for you to think of that. You, you really don't have to increase more money to do this. We could do this and be more efficient at it, and have better results, because now we're trying to actually teach these young guys how to start a business, how to set this up. They, we, we want to bring them into production, not to increase the school-to-prison pipeline. That's all that's doing, simply, you know. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Okay, and one more individual, Brian, Brian Dolaner.
Good evening. I'm Brian Dolaner. I live at 303 West Locust in Urbana. I have recently turned eight-year-old at Lille Elementary, Escuela Lille, and I am a writer in the community and activist in town for fifteen years. I'm here to speak out against the proposal for cops in schools. I don't use euphemisms. These are police officers who will be in uniform and with guns in the schools. And I wanted, for the purpose of the public and for city council, to give just a reminder of the brief history of what this step is, a step backwards. I spoke at the school board last week and wanted to reiterate some points again, that Urbana, in recent memory, has been taking steps towards racial justice and restorative justice methods, methods which were undermined when the previous superintendent was removed, contract was not renewed. And now the effort with the new superintendent, with this proposal to put three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars' worth of police in schools, that's annual, so we're talking about millions of dollars over the years, putting this kind of money into schools is really a step backward, an effort to restore some semblance of law and order in the schools. This is a proposal that is being backed by Mayor Diane Marlin and the current superintendent, and it's really a step backwards. Urbana was the first school district in the state of Illinois to desegregate, and now this is an effort to re-segregate it, already deeply segregated community. Urbana does not want this proposal. You have people coming up here and telling you so, time after time after time now, tonight. This has been an issue for some three weeks now, and I hope that city council will make the decision to turn back this proposal tonight. I also want to sort of point out that this is an effort not to just invest in police, but divest in the schools. This is money that's going to be used to balance the city budget on the backs of the schools. This is money that would be taken from the school district and given to the city for police, to support police pensions. This is millions of dollars of money. There are groups in this community who are doing restorative justice work, racial justice work, and are starving for money. They're working on a dime, as it is. They get paltry amounts from local government compared to the gigantic task at hand. And so I wanted to appeal to the city council tonight to please turn back this proposal. And thank you for your service and your attention tonight.
All right, we do have a couple more. Lynda Minor.
Good evening. As a citizen of the city of Urbana, and I am a parent of an Urbana High School student, I just, I appreciate all of the voices that we've heard tonight to give a different perspective, but I'm confused because we have already had two full-time resource officers in our school since February of 2019. And that is because you, the city, and Urbana Police Department stepped up to provide support to our schools in our time of crisis. And I know that there's views that even an officer that has a weapon in the school is not something that they want to see, but I think a lot of people are being misinformed. We already have weapons in our school. Let me say that again. There are weapons in our school, and anybody who is not believing that are fooling themselves. And I want to know what liability this brings to our city and our school district, because I, I, I don't want to have to be a community that mourns like other communities. And I'm not a person that lives out of fear. Really, that's not the way I want this, this statement to go. I'm a person who wants to frame it in a more positive way. I think a school resource officer can build relationships. We've heard all of the negative aspects. Well, I choose not to frame it in a negative way. And we have control over who we hire and what kind of training they receive, and what role they play, their job description, and things of that sort. And it's all how we frame it. And I choose that we heal all of this negative impact by building relationships. How else are you going to break down barriers other than building relationships, spending time one-on-one, face-to-face, not on a device, not on a, a, a digital world? We have to start talking to each other face-to-face. And if we want to break down fear, you know, racial feels, or racial biases, or, you know, fears of the police, we have to spend time with one another. I, I thank you for your support throughout the year that has offered Urbana School District the time to rebuild, plant trust, and create stability, so that our support surfaces that we do have and we do well can function effectively. I fully support the passing of the resolution to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Urbana School District regarding school resource officers, two full-time school resource officers. And again, I thank you for your service and your commitment to making Urbana better together.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we have two individuals who are present who do not wish to speak but have expressed themselves. One, Teresa Sweeney, who is, does not wish to address the council at this time, this committee of the whole, but has expressed her opinions in email, and she supports the resolution for the resource officer. Is that correct?
I changed it.
Oh, you do?
I changed it.
Oh. All right, then. Please come forward.
My name is Teresa Sweeney. I'm a nationally certified school psychologist in the community, not in Urbana schools. And I have two current high school students at Urbana High School, and I've had a student at Urbana High School since 2013. And I, I wanted to speak on behalf of the school resource officer propos, the inter-agency agreement. I do support it. I've worked with a school resource officer in my school for over twelve years. And we are in Urbana well-resourced in dealing with trauma after a traumatic event, but I question whether or not, without school resource officers, whether or not we're truly able to deal with preventing a traumatic event. So I spoke at the school board meeting last week, and I sent my email that I, that I shared at the school board meeting, and I'm not going to repeat that information. And we have had many people who are passionate in their beliefs, and many people have said they haven't heard people speaking out, which urged me, which made me feel like I had to speak. I had to, I had to get, go on public record. There's lots of people who are in opposition to the school resource officers who've done academic research. They have information and facts, but I don't believe that they have all the information and facts. I don't believe that they are speaking to people who work in the secondary campuses in Urbana. I don't believe that they've talked to a sufficient number of students that go to school in Urbana, and talked to people who've been impacted by the crisis that has been, gone on in their band of schools the last couple of years. And I have also read, done research, and I have seen articles that have supported SROs in the, in the schools, and have talked about how SROs advocate for support, and they also advocate for lesser charges for somebody that has, has engaged in something criminal. And as my friend just said, we've had two full-time SROs in the Urbana schools since February, and the school district had, the school has settled down significantly in this last year. And the objection now appears to be largely because we are talking about the financial agreement changing, and it's not Urbana City covering it anymore. So what I want to urge you to do in terms of supporting this and considering this, is do your research and ask the right people if you need more information, and make sure that you're reading balanced information. I attached several links to the, to the email that I sent to the, to the city council, and so I would urge you to read those as well. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, and we have another individual who does not wish to address the members, is in support of it. That's David Guth. And per email, he says, that's sent to the Urbana City Council in support of the intergovernmental agreement for USD 116, to fully fund the two student resource officers for two and a half years. All right, we have a couple of people who are going to speak at the time. And just for the record, I want to let everybody know that as of 5:30 this evening, I myself received nine letters of support via email, and from Sharon Foley, Dorothy Gabel, David Guth, Julia Loufborro Guth, Teresa Lee Sweeney, Lynda Minor, Karen McKinn, Virginia Lehman, Deborah Boddeney, and two people who said that they would prefer to see this decision tabled for further discussion, those being Don Owen and Ming Q. I did not receive any other emails. So I'll put that in the record. And so, we're going to go now. Thank you for, for public input. That's all the cards I have. We'll go on to our agenda, which will be, is there a staff report? Okay, Mayor?
Just a reminder that city offices will be closed Thursday, Thanksgiving Day, and Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. They will reopen on Monday, December 2nd.
All right, thank you. Always a good news that we're having a holiday, and everybody gets to participate. All right, we're going to go to the ordinances now. An ordinance number 2019-11-066, an ordinance, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, and this is the budget amendment number three omnibus. Elizabeth Hannan, would you please help us with that?
Yes, this is, this is a fairly simple budget amendment, just picking up a few adjustments that need to be made. First item is increasing the budget to purchase road salt for this winter. Because of the way the state bidding process works for road salt, we have to commit to purchase a certain quantity early in the year before they actually receive the bids. The bids were higher than they have been in some years, and so we need to increase that budget. Also, there is a vacant position in the executive department, and we are requesting to transfer four thousand dollars from a personnel line into a contractual services line to pay for a temporary employee through an agency. The grant, which Ms. Mitten mentioned earlier, would be reflected in both revenues and expenditures, and we would rebudget thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars of unspent funds in the police special fund. These are funds that have restricted purpose only for specific police programs and can't be used for any other purpose.
Okay, would there be questions at this time for the, on this? And if not, I would maintain a motion? Yeah, Bill Brown?
I'll move to send ordinance number 2019-11-066 to city council with recommendation for approval.
Second. Seconded by Eric Jacobson. Is there other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that passes, and we'll go forward to city council. Next is a resolution, number 2019- resolution number 2019-11-049R, a resolution authorizing the issuance of capital improvement revenue bonds, series 2019. This concerns Cunningham Children's Home project and other actions connected with the bonds. And we do have, we'll, we'll receive, Elizabeth, you'll do an introduction and then we'll have, we have two individuals here in the neighborhood.
I'll give you a quick introduction.
Thank you.
Um, so this resolution would, um, permit us to be a conduit issue for debt for the Cunningham Children's Home. This is similar to, um, something we did for Clark Lindsay Village back in 2015. Um, because we are the conduit issuer, they can, um, issue tax-exempt bonds, but we have no obligation to repay the debt. The obligation is fully on the children's home. Um, one quick thing is we do have a minor change in the resolution, changing the legal name of the bank. Um, that will be, so you'll have a new resolution in your packet for next week. That's already in the clerk's office, ready to go. And with us tonight, we have Marlin Livingston and Ginger Mills from the children's home to talk a little bit about the project that we are going to facilitate if you approve this.
Okay, so, welcome. Uh, would you like to tell us, give us some information about, um, about the project?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Council members and community, thank you for a brief opportunity to speak. I know you have, uh, weighty and important issues to, to discuss further later on in the agenda, so we will be brief in our remarks. Uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce Ginger Mills, newly married Ginger Mills, so I got the name right. Congratulations. Haley Wright, uh, chief financial officer, if you raise your hand, Haley, uh, chief financial officer for Cunningham Children's Home. Jerry John, uh, our corporate counsel for decades. Um, that's not an indication. He, he looks quite young, but, uh, our board chair, Cheryl Van Ness. And Austin Root is, uh, bond counsel. He came down from Chicago, but he did graduate from U of I Law School, so, uh, we'll, we'll let you in the meeting. Thank you, Austin, for that. So, very good. Cunningham Children's Home, let's go for a brief overview. Mary and Joseph Cunningham, they had no children and, and this dates back to the late 1800s. He was an attorney, a judge, a newspaper owner. Um, he actually, folklore has it that he cast a tying vote, uh, to allow women admission to the University of Illinois. Can you believe that? So, that's a little, uh, I don't have that in writing anywhere, but that's the folklore and we're going to stick with it. Um, they were church leaders and they were concerned, although they had no children, they had, were concerned about neglected children, um, without homes, uh, and, who were impoverished. And then, so thus in 1895, they gave their home to the United, what is today, United Methodist Women, 15 acres of land. And most of you drive by it. Some of you think it is a park. It is not a park. It is a children's home. Uh, and we're very proud of our, our landscaping. And the United Methodist Women continue to steward the home to this day. Um, as part of us being founded, um, Joseph Cunningham wrote in his journal, which we actually have, and it says, "May God's blessing go with this gift and may it be the means of doing much good." I want to fast forward because I know we don't have time for the 125-year history of Cunningham Children's Home, so let's talk a little bit about what we're doing today. Uh, we don't have an orphanage anymore, but we are a residential treatment center. Uh, we primarily serve youth who are referred to us by the Department of Children and Family Services. I'll highlight not all the statistics, but on average, the youth that come to Cunningham Children's Home in our residential placement have on average about seven placements prior to coming to Cunningham Children's Home. And that's a combination of psychiatric facilities, psychiatric hospital placements, or foster care homes, which they've not been able to thrive in or live in safely. Uh, we typically, uh, say goodnight and tuck in 60 youth in residential treatment every night between our residential campus and our group homes. While our older kids don't let us tuck them in much anymore as they get older, but, uh, we do say goodnight and then occasionally they say goodnight back to us. But, uh, that is done in the spirit of love. What we're here for tonight is, I'm obviously in support of resolution 2019-11-049R, resolution authorizing issuance of capital improvement bonds, series 2019. And what brought this about was the completion of our capstone project of a $23 million capital campaign, uh, completed in February of this year, the Noel Education Center. The, the building is a 50,000 square foot structure. We have two programs in the, in it along with recreation facilities designed to address the issue of students with emotional behavioral problems, problems of conduct, where students have not been successful, uh, in the public school. Uh, you know, the new school has all the bells and whistles. We'll go and have a few slides here, uh, to talk about. The classrooms are equipped with the latest educational technologies, increased classroom space. We have on average about six to eight children per classroom and with the full cadre of art therapists, music therapists, recreation therapists, social workers, psychologists, occupational therapists, a fully multidisciplinary team, uh, that supports the work that we do. Uh, those are smart boards. Uh, on the previous slide, I see Ginger's moving us along. Thank you, Ginger. Uh, one unique space compared to what we did. We, we had our kids strung in a number of old buildings, some of them built in the 1950s. This obviously, uh, space here provides a lot more room. Again, this classroom only has, uh, only serves, on average, it can serve up to 10, but, but typically only six to eight youth. As you can see, uh, there's a, those squishy ball things that I'm not, uh, able to sit in, but those help kids that are fidgety or become unregulated or children that are on autistic spectrum. Uh, there's a number of different seating arrangements. There's a rug in the back and a number of chairs that wiggle, et cetera. So, everything in the classroom is meant to be warm, inviting, and therapeutic. All right? This is a class. Um, I can't see what that is, but I'm sure they're using a smart board. As you can see in the, in the picture though, we have, uh, it's a very free learning environment. If you can see that. We have some kids sitting closer, one kid in a bing bag chair. We have another youth with a weighted blanket on their lap. Um, and so it's, it's a variety of kind of this loving, nurturing environment that we're trying to project. Here's an art room. Uh, this is, I think this photo was taken initially after we moved in. That whole room is transformed. We got art everywhere in that room right now with the kidney tables. They work in small groups. Our art therapist, which is an artist, but she's also trained in art therapy, allows children to work through anxiety, anger, loss in those spaces. There's our colorful dining facility. We serve about 300 meals out of that central dining facility every day. There's the general floor plan. As I mentioned earlier, there's two programs served out of the school. Uh, one, we have a partnership with Urbana School District 116. They administer the school. They, uh, teach, um, uh, youth. They're called, in the, it's an orphanage act school. We don't use that word anymore. This, the legislature has not caught up with, uh, the actual phrase. But if you look at the, kind of the blue part there, that's where children who live at Cunningham, that's where they go to school. The pink area there is where, is a therapeutic day school. Uh, we have children from, at times, 10 or 13 different counties coming, uh, from central Illinois to our therapeutic day school. It serves about 65 to 70 youth. And again, these are children typically with individual education plans, um, and some kind of challenge with learning autism, uh, maybe a severe social or anxiety phobia. Uh, maybe they're, are very aggressive and we're able to kind of serve them in a very therapeutic way. Lastly is the Mary and Lou Henson Gymnasium. Uh, here's ribbon cutting. Uh, it offers a full continuum. It has a divider. Do we have some more pictures of that? There we go. There's the full gymnasium. The floor is named after Kendall Gill. Kendall Gill has come back, uh, back when Illini had a winning basketball team. And we're going to have one this year, Mayor. Uh, so Kendall Gill was part of the Flying Illini and, uh, and he's come back to Cunningham every year for 30 years, except for two years. Uh, and so we named the court after him and we have a big golf outing. Obviously, most of you know about that. Here's some kids doing some stretching exercises. Again, want to stress the low, uh, the low class size and the natural lighting in the gymnasium. So, that's exciting. Okay.
It's the fundraising page.
Okay. Here's, generally speaking, um, again, as, as, as your staff mentioned, the city's under no obligation to repay the $7 million of debt, which is basically consolidating prior debt as part of the $23 million new campus renovation plan. Um, but we, we do obviously have to fundraise, uh, uh, fundraise for the program. The total cost came in just under $13 million. That's about $1.2 million less than what we, the architects had projected the cost. We did manage the project very tightly. Um, our fundraising goal, uh, was eight and a half million dollars. We're about 87% of the goal. There's still time to put your name in the building. Uh, you can see me after this. So we're about a million left to go on the fundraising side. Uh, and again, thanks to the great work of the United Methodist Women, uh, and our fundraising team and the great work that our staff do there every day. Uh, pursuant to any of your questions, again, I'd ask that the council members, uh, endorse the resolution tonight.
Thank you very much. Um, and see, did everybody who wanted to speak for the Cunningham, come forward? Okay, good. All right. Uh, so, comments? Is there a motion? Why don't we open up discussion here? Yeah, Bill Brown?
Hey, a question for, well, I guess a question for each staff in Cunningham. So, I understand that this will refund a lot of the, um, bonds you have out or the, the debt you have out. Are you also going to be doing, uh, more construction soon? I went to the opening and I think over spring break, you guys had a, the opening and I know the mayor did too, but it's a really beautiful facility. Are, do you have plans to do more additions or constructions right now?
The, the, this project is, is, represents the final phase in our master campus plan. Uh, we're going to take a bit of a breath. Um, so currently, there are no current plans to do additional building on the site. So, but we are a growing, thriving organization. I'm very proud of the fact that we're starting to move out in the community with runaway and homeless youth programs now. Uh, we opened up Hope Springs Counseling Center, uh, two years ago. That's on a sliding scale. We're one of the few behavioral health centers that take Medicaid, uh, in the county. Uh, we are currently funded by the 708 Board to work with families, um, as, as part of a, a family intervention model that is free to families. So we're very excited about the work that's going on. Um, we've been on our campus for about 120 years. So in 2014, strategically, we made a, a strong commitment under the board's leadership to move out and bring our services, uh, into the community. So, um, I think the way the world is working right now is we want to work, we do work in the schools, uh, by the way, a number of schools. We want to move out of our campus and move into homes and into schools. And we have a vocational program, so we, we are in businesses. So that is really, brick and mortar is not really the wave of the future. We had to do this to, really to replace our existing facilities. The total, that facility serves about 130 youth. Um, our prior facilities could serve about 110. So, we really didn't build the facilities to grow more brick and mortar. We really want to be an asset to the community going forward by pushing off of our campus and working with communities in the homes, on the front porches and in the schools.
Okay, thanks. And I have to also put in a plug for, um, I know you have a, um, camp, you have to keep a secure campus. Um, in the summer though, there's a need for summer, summer food programs in the school district and that part of town especially is, there's no locations for, most of them are in the southern part of town or central, around the high schools. Um, so if there's any way in the future, you can think about how you could open up that beautiful cafeteria in the summertime to, um, it's just serve some meals that, um, are provided or even a mobile, mobile, um, some kind of mobile thing if, if that's possible. Um, I know especially the part of the school district that's just across the street of Cunningham to the north, um, has a lot of need for, for summer, summer food programs.
Well, thank you. We're, we're open to consider anything innovative and I have a reputation for doing things on the margins and a little crazy. So, I mean, if it can help people, uh, we'll, we'll step up and see if we can help out. That current facility, we serve about 300 to 350 meals. So that particular, that particular dining facility and then background checks, et cetera, may not be the best suited, but we do have some decommissioned facilities on our campus. Um, the old Gerber School, um, is currently decommissioned, so there might be an opportunity. And that facility, uh, and that kitchen staff have the ability to thermite, uh, but basically put food in thermos rollers and, and, and put it all over, really all over town. So, um, we have, we have some capacity to do that. Be more than happy to talk about it.
Great. Um, I do have a question for staff. I, I noticed a couple of places where it said that there was, um, supposed to be a public hearing. First, um, I think page 15, um, section N says that we had a public hearing upon notice. Did we, did we do that?
Correct. We've posted the notice. The public hearing will take place at the start of next week's meeting.
Okay.
Prior to when you approve this.
Okay. Thank you.
Others, yes, Mary Lou. Mary Ellis.
Mary Lou.
Mary Ellis, woo.
I'm wondering, Elizabeth, can you expand a little bit about, um, just exactly what the role is the city is playing here? So, so basically, what I heard from everybody is we're not on the hook for $7 million, correct?
Right. This is, this is, um, and if, if their bond counsel wants to jump in, um, we may, if this gets complicated. But basically, we're a conduit issuer, so they're using our tax-exempt status to issue tax-exempt debt, but no, we're not on the hook. They're responsible for repaying the debt. And there will be a footnote in our financial statements, but this won't show up as a liability, um, for the city.
And yeah, nothing to add. It's really secured by the loan payments. It's secured by the borrowers' payments. Um, similar, if not almost identical, structure to what was done for the Cunningham Children's Home in 2009 as well.
So, we've basically done this for Clark Lindsay, is that what you said? And?
Since I have been here, we've done this for Clark Lindsay. To best of my knowledge, we've done it previously for both Clark Lindsay and the Cunningham Children's Home at different times.
Yeah, the initial bond issuance was in, uh, I believe, 2009, uh, for the construction of the residential treatment center. Some of that debt is being folded into this, um, into this proposition as well. So this is the, uh, second iteration, if you will, of the Cunningham Children's Home asking the city to act as a conduit or a sponsor. Typically, not-for-profits have a couple of options. We enjoy, and again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. Did not, we did not give the staff a lot of time to kind of turn this around, so thank you for that. Um, the, not-for-profits have the option that we can go to the city, we can go to the county. Uh, and I think there's a state municipal body as well that can issue these. We enjoy our working relationships with the city and it just felt right to us to ask the city to act as a conduit, um, in, in this manner, so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I move to send, uh, resolution number 2019-11-049R, resolution authorizing issuance of capital improvement revenue bonds to city council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, Mary Ellis. Seconded it? Any discussion? Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that goes forward.
All right. Again, I thank the council and the mayor and the city staff. Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Next, we have ordinance number 2019-11-068, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, chapter two, to add a member to the Market at the Square Advisory Board. And this would be representative for the food truck businesses. And Lori?
Thank you. Um, I don't have too much more to say than that, other than the Market at the Square Advisory Board has asked for this new member category to be added to their composition in order to, uh, represent the food truck vendors. So, uh, with that, the staff is also recommending approval of this ordinance.
Okay, are there any questions for Lori on this topic? Could I ask, uh, how is the market doing this year? Uh, I mean, we've kind of ended a, a busy year, but, um...
We can get the numbers for you. I don't have those in front of me.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mary Lou. Mary Ellis, woo. If I could just get your name right, thank you.
I like Mary Lou.
So, I'm the chair of, of the Farmer's Market Advisory Board. So I'd like to move ordinance number 2019-11-068, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, chapter two, to add a member to the Market at the Square Advisory Board for a food truck representative.
Second.
Okay. And Teresa. Seconded it? All right, other discussion? Yes?
I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I just kind of wanted to comment a little bit about what the advisory board had discussed. Um, we had a presentation about, about six weeks ago in terms of the, um, composition of the different vendors that are there. And approximately, I want to say it was 20% of the vendors are food truck represent. Uh, so, we felt that it was important that they have a, they have a voice at that table, which is why this is in front of you right now.
Yes, very thoughtful. Other... Yes, very thoughtful. Other comments or questions? Okay, let's then make a decision. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, so that will forward to the City Council with approval. Next comes resolution 2019-11-051R. It's a resolution amending certain home investment partnership program loan documents between the City of Urbana and Bristol Place Residences, LPE, and Community Development. And Shirley?
This resolution authorizes an amendment to the Bristol Place Residence Project that's being done in Champaign. The City of Urbana manages the Urbana Home Consortium grant, and therefore, we're bringing the amendment for you for your review and approval. In 2018, the City of Champaign allocated $400,000 from their portion of the home funds for the redevelopment project. The developers requested an additional funds for the project cost, and Champaign has agreed to allocate an additional $151,000 of their portion of the home funds towards this project. Approval of the program will further goal number one in the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium Consolidated Plan, FY 2015-19, which relates to the provision of affordable housing. Authorizing the amendment will not have an impact on the City of Urbana programs or budget.
Does anybody have a question for Sheila? Yes, Sharice.
So I know when I was reading this, I really didn't understand. Why is Urbana involved in the Champaign?
We're the lead entity of a grant that we get that serves Urbana, Champaign and the county. So we get about, this year, we got a little over $750,000. And then that is broken down by population. So the county gets like 18% and Champaign gets 51% of that pot of money. And Urbana gets the balance to set priorities on projects that we want to use the funds for.
Okay, and so our being involved in this would grant Champaign, the Housing Authority? I'm just confused. I'm sorry.
Because we're the lead entity and administrative agency, it's our role to bring it forward that they would like to allocate more money to the project.
So the project is not yet completed, is from what I?
No, it's like 85% complete.
Okay, and what is the, how is that housing going to go exactly? You said something about affordable housing. I didn't know, because of course I live in Champaign, but I live close to where you're talking. So what I'm talking, are they selling property or are they renting property?
They'll be doing both.
Okay, so some of that property will be sold and some will be rented. Is it open for housing now?
It should be open by the end of December. They've got some tax credit money in there that's requiring them to be able to move forward by then. But I go to their draw meetings every month and they are probably 90% done when I was there a couple of weeks ago.
In those meetings, did they happen to talk about whether they were going to put a sound wall between the railroad tracks and that area? I can't see why anybody would live there. I hear the train all the way, and I don't live right next to the train. And there are train tracks right there. So I always wondered, why are they building a house here? Whole development? So that's, is there going to be any kind of noise reduction, something done? Are they, is that the last thing that they're going to do?
I don't know.
I mean, since we're given money and we have to bring it up or whatever, that's why.
Yeah, it's the City of Champaign's allocation that they're giving to this. It's not the City of Urbana money.
Okay.
And they are building it to meet the environmental standards of the federal government. So there'll be certain noise decibels that they have to keep below. And they can do that by different construction techniques and windows and that type of a thing. So I'm sure that they are. I've not been on the beginning stages of this, but I'm sure that they will meet the federal guidelines.
And it's affordable housing right next to the train tracks?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, just wanted to know. All right.
I did once live in an apartment next to railroad track and I found that after about the second week, I didn't actually even hear the train anymore. But that's my story. All right, other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. To send resolution number 2019-011-051R, resolution amending certain home investment partnership program loan documents between the City of Urbana and Bristol Place Residences. Be forwarded to the full council with recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Jared.
Second.
Eric Jacobson made second. Other comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, all right, that goes forward with City Council with approval. Okay. We have one more thing, and I see Sheila's still here, and she's going to have a little bit more work to do. Resolution number 2019-11-052R, a resolution approving a certain intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and the Housing Authority of Champaign County. Would you like to introduce that, please?
Sure. This resolution authorizes the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Housing Authority for the provision of environmental review services. Any entity that receives federal funds from HUD, such as CBG Home or Public Housing Programs, is required to conduct environmental reviews on their activities and projects. Under 24 CFR Part 58, the City of Urbana is deemed a responsible entity for such services on behalf of other entities, including the Housing Authority. Staff has received environmental review training, which included recent policy changes regarding the process, and have established a relationship with HUD and environmental field staff. Under this agreement, staff would perform the necessary reviews for the Housing Authority for reimbursement on a profile basis. This will assist the Housing Authority to provide affordable housing for residents of Champaign County, and it's a goal consistent with the city's consolidated plan and comprehensive plan. Approval of this agreement will result in revenue for staff time to complete the revenues, or the reviews, I'm sorry. And we've done this since at least 2014. So this just updates that agreement.
Okay, Bill Brown.
First. So I see it's a flat rate. Does the review take more time or effort if the property's bigger, has more parcels, or is it pretty much just doing some research on one property?
I don't think it takes any more time because you're looking at the same type of things regardless of the size of the property. So you're looking at the floodplain maps, you're looking at, you know, if there's any protected species or wildlife, you're looking at any environmental hazards that are going on. So it doesn't typically matter the size. It's really more location driven.
I understand the Housing Authority's doing projects in other county now, so would there be travel included in that?
No, typically, since I've been here, we've done three outside of the county. One of them, they hired a third party to do, and so we just were the reviewer of their work. The others, we were able to do here internally and did not travel.
Okay, if there's travel involved, I think we could add that on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Mary Ellis.
Got my name right.
Third time's a charm.
So we've been doing this since 2015. I'm wondering, approximately, how many do we do each year?
Since I've been here, we've done seven.
Total.
Total. So it would depend on their activity, the Housing Authority's activity. Some of the projects that are in Champaign, Champaign will do them. If they're in Urbana or countywide, Urbana has done them. So like the new one that's getting ready to start pine wood development in Urbana, we've completed the environmental review for it. So it just kind of depends.
So did they have intergovernmental agreements with, say, Champaign as well to conduct this in? Okay, all right.
Okay. Bill Brown. I'll move to forward. Resolution number 2019-11-052R, resolution approving certain intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and Housing Authority of Champaign County to City Council with recommendation for approval. Second. And Eric would second it. Eric Jacobson. All right, is there other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? And the mayor got her voting. You're not voting. Oh, you tried to vote though. Okay, all right. Okay, that passes. And that will go to the City Council. Next is resolution number 2019-11-050R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the School Resource Program Intergovernmental Agreement. That's rather interestingly pronounced, with Urbana UPD, Public Police Department. Yeah, usually we like to do an introduction and then we go to public input. So if you want to, if you want to cover the introduction and then step aside, we'll do three or, there's three individuals who wanted to speak at the time.
Jennifer Avery Tatum, Superintendent of Urbana School District.
That's right, I should recognize that. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So Mayor, Council, citizens, thank you. I wanted to, obviously, Dr. Avery Tatum just introduced herself. I also, as we go through this, we may ask another staff to help us. For the Police Department, we have Deputy Chief Searls and then Officer Michelle Robinson. In addition, in the back, the high school has sent part of their admin team, Julie Blixen, back there. And I also want to make special mention for the Urbana Middle School Principal who's here. And his name is Joe Weemel, and it's his birthday.
Congratulations, Joe.
Just how you wanted to celebrate.
Yes, he wanted to celebrate with all of us.
Okay, thank you.
Tonight, we are, I'm going to give, provide a few opening comments and then we'll be able to answer questions and go with whatever order, I guess, you guys would like. But I want to just start with a couple of items. First of all, I want to stress this is a partnership. And this is not the Police Department acting alone. This is not the Police Department doing something without lots of input and back and forth and discussions with the school district. That is why we sit here together tonight in front of you. As I've listened over the last couple of weeks at school board meetings and then again tonight, I understand that there are impassioned views on both sides. I will say that having SROs does not mean the removal of other efforts, specifically when it comes to these restorative practices and other structural supports that they have placed in. This isn't one or the other. We're asking you to consider both of these options. And the school resource officer option is obviously the one that we're talking about tonight. The timeline is, we've had some discussion about this. I know this isn't the first time that this topic has come before. 15, 18 years ago, this topic came before this council with regards to trying to up SRO coverage. And for whatever reason, didn't move forward. I was a new detective at the time, but I'm just letting you know that I know that this, there's been some, there has been discussion that has gone on for years on this particular topic. There's been another narrative that has taken root when we had this discussion. Part of that has to do with, for the last 26 years, there's been one halftime SRO and everything has just been fine. And why now? I'm here to offer that I don't believe that for 26 years, it's been just fine with a halftime SRO covering both schools and then using the rest of the other half of their time to manage a detective caseload. We've had a juvenile investigator who's had to supplement those efforts. We've had other detectives who've supplemented those efforts. We have had patrol officers who have supplemented those efforts. We had these Street Crimes Unit, a problem-oriented policing team that supplemented those efforts. And I'm familiar with that because I oversaw that in May of 2004, when the school wasn't all sunshine and rainbows at that time. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. I think I might have said that in other presentations, but I just want to at least mention that again. It's been almost a generation since the initial plan that we put out with regards to our halftime SRO covering two schools. And the world has indeed changed. And we have, we do have in 2019 more youth gun violence than we have had in prior years. Last year was indeed a sort of watershed moment. And I will say again, in a couple of different times, I will quote different people in here, but Preston Williams, who was the longtime superintendent, when I asked him specifically about this back in early spring, we had a conversation and I said, is it time for us to sort of change our model? Because the Police Department took that halftime SRO and made it full-time at the high school in October. And in February, we pushed that SRO to cover three out of five days and we had overtime at the high school to cover the last of the school year from February through the end of the school year. And then we began that same process in August when school started. Matter of fact, we added to that then this fall at the request of the school so that we would make sure they had what they needed to make the school year start well. And it evidently has been going well. And so in August, we had a SRO assigned, Michelle Robinson, to the middle school. The role of the SRO is something that's come up again many times. And I would just wanted to say very briefly that this is sort of a continuum of sort of experience when it comes to the SRO. Most of the time, sometimes it's just simply as simple as a sense of security. And I know that when, that sometimes people, not everyone feels that way. But we have had a calming presence. I will not stand here before you and say everything that's happened at the schools this fall is, and it's better, is because of the SRO. I will offer that it's at least part of the rationale and part of the reason as to why the school's year has gone better. In addition to that, we clearly have the armed intruder issue. I think last week, there was some discussion at the school board meeting with regards to whether or not that one officer could make a difference. And I don't know the answer to that. I don't think any of us know the answer to that. And I think that will depend on time and place. But to have that officer there, armed and trained and ready to go to work, is absolutely vital. The one other thing I wanted to mention with regards to the SRO and their role is that it, part of what we envisioned for this is that there's an opportunity for them, as you might recall for our presentation about six weeks ago, was to fulfill those three roles. That teacher role, that informal counselor role, and yes, that law enforcement officer role, should it be necessary. However, this is an absolutely fantastic opportunity for us to increase these non-enforcement contacts and to have interaction between police and the public. And in this case, that public are the students. And I'll go on just a little bit. I know there was some other, and some of what I'm addressing are issues that I've seen come up here over the last few weeks as we've done this, with regards to the review and evaluation of the SROs. I know as you looked into your materials that came out on Thursday, that when it came to that section, it was maybe not as detailed as other pieces of that. And I will say that that was an intentional act as we went through this and discussed this. One of the things that I looked at, because you can find indeed some legal templates and boilerplate language on just about everything in the world. So as we got some of that material back, we looked at some of what we had found and we weren't pleased with what we found. And we didn't think it was going to fit our Urbana model. So we decided that we wanted to try to leave ourselves some opportunity and some room to grow and some room to work together and try to make those sorts of evaluations, whether that's specifically with regards to the officer themselves, so we would have that interaction with their supervisors, whether that's patrol sergeants who happen to be there, or more likely, their Lieutenant Matt Bain within our Services Division. He's going to be the direct reporting, direct report for those officers. Whether it's school administrators or other staff, we can also, we can also watch through even body camera footage. They too will have the, that bit of equipment on them. And then in addition to that, when it comes to the evaluation of that SRO, we would actually have our traditional evaluation process. With regards to the program review, which I think is also one of those discussion points, we will, we will indeed have our traditional statistics that we have. And whether those are field interview cards, or reports that document involvement of officers, whether that's a report that's involved, even things like arrests should they happen. It will include youth assessment center referrals, whether charges are filed or even not filed, what the final dispositions are. We will have our traditional statistics available to us when the officers compile their documents. We'll also have access to school statistics and whether that's documents that they have with regards to even fights and other issues that they deal with. We will, we will work with them when their support interventions have been tallied up. And we'll have feedback directly from the schools as well, whether that's central office staff as in superintendent folks, whether that's administrative staff for either the high school or the middle school, depending on which place we are. And then again, those, the SIs and the SEAs, I get that right?
Mm-hmm.
Those support staff people. We would have feedback from them. And another interesting area of feedback, as we've had some thoughts and discussions and talked about it, is the power of that narrative story. The idea that we'd be able to get feedback from those officers when certain things, not necessarily a tally mark on a sheet, but when we hear stories about the SRO who's taken someone home who didn't have a ride, or when we have some of those stories, those types of things, I think really make this particular program real. Not all of our feedback along those lines is quantitative. We can't always necessarily prove the negative. I had a, I told a school board member, Tori Exum, when she spoke last week, I was going to steal one of her lines. And that line was, prevention through connection. And that when we have those school resource officers there in the building, we don't know what they might prevent by simply being there. It might be a specific deterrent effect where someone maybe might not do something because the police are in the school. Or it might be, she said something nice and she somehow consoled someone that made them choose not to make a bad decision. And that leads directly then to, I guess, one of the last introductory remarks I wanted to make, which had to do with the culture of the school resource officer reprogram. One of the things that I have told the briefings that I've been to our current officers is that I want them to treat the citizens with grace and respect. Do your job, but treat them with grace and respect. That starts with me, and then that permeates down through our chain of command, through Lieutenant Bain and to the school resource officers. Treating with grace and respect has made, even if they do have to make an arrest, they can still do that. One of the things I wanted to mention, though, that has come up again, time and time again, and we did a little bit of, of quick number work, we only went back five and a half years, and we chose that point because that's when Matt Bain became the SRO at the year, when he was in the Detective Bureau, at about five and a half years ago. This covers his term, Jeff Steinberg, Darren McCartney, and Michelle Robinson. As a matter of fact, McCartney and Robinson would have obviously overlapped this fall since about Labor Day. And so we looked at school, these school resource officers who made arrests on school property for school-related events that involve students, not angry parents, but students. And over those five and a half years at two campuses covering four officers, we found thirty-five technical arrests. I say technical because two ultimately ended up being notices to appear to eighteen-year-olds. So we had thirty-three custodial arrests for two campuses. Twenty-four of those arrests were referred to the Youth Assessment Center. That might have meant a direct transport to the Youth Assessment Center. It might have been a trip home with a later referral to the Youth Assessment Center. So that brought us down to nine other arrests over five and a half years. Those would have gone to the Juvenile Detention Center. Of those nine, six, upon their initial screening, which would have allowed for entry, either a felony or they had a certain number of points, there's an instrument that guides this, six of those arrests, these were later referred to the Youth Assessment Center, which left three who were technically detained at Juvenile Detention Center. One was charged, one was no charged, and one must have been fairly recent as it's still pending matter at the State's Attorney's Office. Of those thirty-three, no arrests led, no students were sentenced to the Illinois Department of Juvenile Justice or the Department of Corrections. Thirty of the thirty-three arrests were ultimately referred to the Youth Assessment Center for School Board President John Dimmitt last week said something, and I'm stealing this as well. He described our efforts as being a search for services as opposed to a search for a cell. I hope that answers at least a few of the questions and some of the concerns that were brought up over the last couple of weeks here, especially since last Thursday when we produced our materials. I wanted to, at this point, allow, if you have anything you would like to say at this point, I will gladly be quiet for a moment.
No, I've talked a lot in the last few weeks, so.
So I guess if you'd like to.
Okay, so I, maybe what we'll do is have questions, if you have, for these two individuals, and then we'll have public input, and then we'll have the discussion. Okay, go ahead. Bill Brown.
Yeah, I had a question about searches. I see that if the SRO is, is asked to assist in a search by a school employee, then the, then they follow the district's policy. Also, the standard for searches lower, you don't have to have reasonable, you don't have to have probable cause, you have reasonable suspicion. So I'm wondering if they find something during that search, because it's a school, because they're asked by the school member and have this lower standard of suspicion, would that be admissible in a criminal court then? It seems like it wouldn't be a criminal search anymore. It would just be used for disciplinary matters. Is that, is that right?
Generally speaking, I would say it would, might depend on what it is that was found. So I, I think, yes, there is, so there is a lesser expectation of privacy in certain areas. That's why when people go to airports, you turn in your pockets and, and get your bags else, and can be searched. In certain instances, there's a lesser expectation of privacy within, when it comes to searching. So I, I would offer up, I guess it would depend on what it is. If it's, if there's a gun, that might be different than if it's a small amount of cannabis that the school would like to address to their disciplinary.
And if the, if the school, the person from the school hadn't asked you to search, then you would need the higher standard. If you just wanted to do the search on your own, you'd have to have, you'd have to have probable cause, even though you're in the school. Is that right?
Well, the school officer, the school resource officer would technically be a, and I think it's actually mentioned in here, in some of the language, that they would be part of, part of the school staff.
They would be part of the search, yes, in the presence of a school administrator, participating with that. I look for the page.
Okay. In some of the materials I've read, it seemed to me that if, unless you were requested directly by district staff to do the search, then you would have to abide by the higher standards. So I guess I'd like to allow clarification before next week on that.
Okay.
And then I noticed in the budget amendment, there's a slight increase for the risk management. Is that just based on number of officers, or is that based on some increased risk because we're going to have SROs? Is it, is the risk any different? Maybe that's a question for Elizabeth. Is that just a flat amount based on the officers?
Actually, it's, it's a percentage of salary that's based on our work comp premiums.
Doesn't have anything to do with the job description or anything like that?
Well, work, work comp premiums are higher for police officers. They're different for different job classifications. So, yeah.
But no differences between police officers because they're in schools and contacting?
No, all police officers are at the same rate.
Okay, I think that's my only two questions. I will have some discussion items later.
All right, and Dean?
Yes.
Dean Hazen.
I just wanted to make a statement to Jennifer Ivory Tatum. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Okay. On behalf of my wife and myself and my neighbors and our friends, I want to thank you for getting the school under control so quickly. Frankly, I didn't think it could be done. We were at our wits' end. I have one child that's in junior high and one that just graduated and moved on to college. And it, it was really rough. They were sending me videos weekly of fights in the hallways. Our neighbor was attacked, a child near the school. We were going to a lot of school board meetings that ran till ten or eleven at night after work, and it really seemed like it was going nowhere. So we want to thank you. We appreciate your demeanor and the great work you've done, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's been a team effort, for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, then Sharice, and then Eric.
Well, Jared Ashley before me, because he raised his hand.
Oh, I missed you, sir. I'm sorry. Go ahead, then.
It's all right. Everybody's got questions. I'll just ask one, the quick one that I had to piggyback off of what Bill was saying. In the search policy, is there any requirement or expectation to notify parents that a student is going to be searched by the police?
Yes, whenever possible, we would, we would do that. But depending, as Chief said, depending on what we think the student might have, if it were, you know, clear and present danger kind of issue, we would go forward with that. But then interviewing the student, following whatever we would take from the student during the search, we would involve the parent as, as much as we can, yes.
Is that language articulated in this agreement somewhere?
So our, it refers to our policy on page nine, which kind of outlines that we didn't include the policy in the agreement because we listed it. But on page nine, we talk about how we'll conduct the search, and then the interview. Subsequently, all the interviewing is in another whole section, too. Starting on page ten, but there's another whole section about interviewing from, on seven and eight. So all of that would be part of that, the search, the interview, and how we would notify the parent, what administrator would be present during that. At all times, we'd like to have a building principal or a designated there while the search is happening.
Okay. I guess I'm just a little confused on, looking for clarity on what, whenever possible means as far as getting parents involved.
So this is pretty.
Outside of the very clear, there's a clear and present danger portion of this, whenever possible seems arbitrary, doesn't seem very specific or binding in, in the, in the agreement. It's kind of, sounds like at our discretion.
So the bottom of page seven, and I can read it out loud. For people who don't have it, interviews of minor students without permission of the student's parents or guardian are not permitted unless a legal process is presented or in emergency situations. So the emergency situation would be, you know, we've had reports of a student that may have entered the premises with a gun or have a gun on them, on their person. That might be considered an emergency situation. Their building principal shall attempt to contact the student's guardian, parent, and inform them that the student is subject to an interview. Therefore, later on, it discusses the search. In extreme situations, the SRO may, in effect, temporary protective custody, take the student into temporary protective custody if this were any emergency situation where we felt the student's safety and the student's safety of others were in jeopardy. And again, we would take that student off. We would, again, do whatever we can to contact the parent or guardian and have them present. Later on, we talk about the student being removed from the school by the SRO if this were, again, one of those emergency situations.
Okay, I guess I'd be interested to see a little more articulated language about emergency situations and where those apply.
So are you specifically with the interviews or searching?
I, both. Just that, it seems, it just seems open-ended a little bit.
So, yeah, if I may, with regards to the, the searching, so the, the emergency situation with regards to searching is mostly, as far as I'm, will be when there's weapons involved. And so that's when we've had those, if we've had those particular issues, that student X, student Y, student Z has a, has brought something into school, and the officers were to go to approach, we get multiple reports, or there's the, there's a bulge in the sweatshirt or whatnot. Those are the types of things, and then they would, we would want them to act. And with regards to interviewing without the parental consent, sometimes we've had issues, unfortunately, where we've had parents or guardians who were indeed, and unfortunately, the suspect or the perpetrator, that we had to conduct some interviews and in certain abusive situations. So in those, and with regards to, I guess, interviewing, that's how I might classify one of the emergency situations.
Can we put language about that into this agreement to specify that that's what we're referring to?
A weapon.
In either situation?
Sure.
I'm gonna let the, I'm gonna let the city attorney answer that.
Unfortunately, in agreements like this, one cannot address every single possible situation that might be envisioned. Because when you do, that suggests, in interpreting an agreement, that situations that are not listed are not included. That's why you often see in agreements, when it deals with conduct, where reasonably possible or to the extent possible type language. I think what our chief is really saying is these types of measures will be, which has raised some concern, will be taken where there appears to be, you know, a rational being would conclude that there is an immediate threat to human life, health, or safety, and possibly extreme danger to property, though the latter is less of a concern in this situation. So you can't, in an agreement like this and others similar to this, expect to find every single situation. At some point, you have to decide, can you trust the folks in the school, the SRO in our case, in this context of this agreement, to act rationally, with dignity, and with grace? I mean, that's a policy decision on your part.
Okay. I, I understand that need. Jim, I guess, in the situation of this particular search where we're not going to be telling parents ahead of the search, we're talking about a very specific situation, though. I don't think there's a lot of, I don't, I don't see the harm in at least adding the language to it, maybe not necessarily eliminating an emergency situations, but clearly articulating that this is the only situation that we can reasonably foresee being used in this, in this situation.
I think, I think if we do that, we could say something like, and I put this in various contracts, for example.
Sure.
Right? Or such and such, but not necessarily limited to. So there are ways, depending on what it is specifically you would like to put in it. And I have to leave it to our chief and our superintendent.
Jennifer, yes.
Jennifer, to decide whether they want, I was, I worked with the chief on drafting the original draft of this agreement, so I'm happy to put in whatever they want me to put in.
I can talk to our attorneys, but I'm fine with us adding such as, because our interpretation is that is the emergency situation.
I think it would just be helpful to articulate those things.
Sure.
In both, in both of those situations. I'll save the rest of my questions.
Very good.
Okay, so who was next, then? Yes, Sharice.
I was just wondering, will the SRO, because I did watch the school board meeting as much as, as possible as I, as I could. And I know that children, and particularly at the middle school age, are ignorant about a lot of law, different laws, and I'm finding that they're very ignorant at the high school level as well. What I wanted to know is, does the SRO at any time during the school year, maybe at the beginning, maybe at the end, I don't know, engage in some kind of educational forum where they have, you know, eighth grade assemblies, you know, assemblies of sorts to inform kids? These are, these are the things that you don't want to do. You know, these are the things that can get you in trouble, no matter how small you may think it is. But this is, these are, you know, are there any kind of forums like that to, where the SRO can actually hold some kind of assembly to educate the, the children about sexting, for example?
Sure.
Or something like that? And, because a lot of kids don't know, no, you can't send pictures of your bum across, you know, that's, that's child porn. They don't know that. So I was just wondering if you, if, if anything like that would fall under their, the, what the SRO might do.
So one of our biggest goals is education. So you really kind of hit that nail on the head there, is, we did not do, because Michelle started Officer Robinson after school had started, the ideal time to do that would be the beginning of the year, right? And Dr. Weemelk could speak to this and how he'd like to do this, but we typically would probably do like a gra- But we typically would probably do like a grade level, you know, sixth graders together, seventh graders, eighth graders. Social media is the bane of our existence at the middle school level. And so I think having some discussions around, you know, what is appropriate on social media, that is a huge piece, I think, of the educational role. I know Officer Robinson deals a lot right now with social media. I don't want to say daily, but I'm sure, I know it is a, a big part of what she's doing. And it is education, you know, sharing pictures that shouldn't be shared across social media. I think young people don't realize, you know, in the heat of the moment, some of the things they're doing and the choices that they're making. So that is definitely, and I, and I know you're speaking to middle school, but our high school students could benefit from some of those educational conversations as well. And I think even just some of the things in the community, I think a lot of our young people don't realize the consequences for some of the decisions and choices that they make. And having our school resource officer explain those in a non-threatening way. And of course, you know, I'm a big, we use positive behavior intervention supports, you know, not giving students ideas of things to do, but just sharing, these are things that you should not do. Or making sure that they know that if they're thinking of those kind of things, or if those things have happened, that their, that the school resource officer is a person that they can come to and connect with. I know sometimes students may be being cyberbullied or intimidated via social media, and we want them to be able to approach our SRO and say, this is happening, please help me. So I think all of that is part of that educational component. So we did not do that when Officer Robinson started, because we were, you know, it was, we were not quite sure if she was going to be there forever, or piloting, or what was going to happen. But that, that definitely is the plan moving forward at, at both levels, not just middle school.
Is that, is that also something that's reflected in the agreement?
So one of the goals, the very beginning-
That the SRO will be doing something to that effect? I know that there's, there's been some, some disagreement, people thinking that, you know, the SRO isn't an educator, the SRO should, you know, shouldn't be doing-
Not a counselor.
Yeah, not a counselor, blah, da, blah. But if you've not worked in the education system, and, and I have, what I have found is that children, when they don't know, they will do anything. And they, 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 they really want that structure. They really, and nowadays, they really need that structure. And they find, I have found, in my experience at least, that if, if there is not consequences listed, honestly, to say, this is what will happen if this, if you do this, blah, da, blah, da, blah, oftentimes, children will not have any consequences. They don't even think about them. At least it gives you something to think about. When I was in junior high, I didn't want to fight, I didn't want to get any fights because I might get kicked out of school, or I might get suspended, and then I have to deal with my mama. Well, children nowadays don't have fear of mother like they used to. They don't have fear, fear of daddy like they used to. And so I want them, if, if nothing else, maybe hopefully, they will fear that if they do something that is illegal, even if they don't know that it's illegal. But if, if, if they know that there are consequences out there, and that's why I was wondering if, you know, if those things would be listed, and if the SRO is the person that's going to be giving that information? Or would it be social worker, would it be, you know, will they work in concert with each other?
Sure.
How that would go?
So, not, it is not detailed exactly what we just talked about, whereas it doesn't say bringing the students together for an assembly or anything like that. But the goals at the very beginning of the agreement, serving as a positive role model, providing a safe, secure, orderly learning environment, promoting, so C, promoting citizen awareness about the law, knowledge of the law, enforcement efforts, obligations, being a trusted and confidential source of communication between students. And then E, providing information for staff, parents, and resources within the community. So I think all of those goals pretty much encompass what you just discussed. We didn't put in, you know, very specifically through this activity, this activity, through this activity. However, that is exactly what we're thinking in terms of-
It falls under that umbrella.
That would be one of the educational activities that the SRO would do in tandem with other, you know, other people. So not that we would expect the SRO to plan that assembly, but the administrators would be involved.
But they would be part of it.
Exactly. We have clinical professionals who we would say, and counselors and social workers, who are the experts, who would be able to work with the SRO to deliver that message around, you know, citizenship, empowering students to know the law, enforcement. And I'm, and I'm like you, as an educator, I am a firm believer in, we teach the expectations. If we don't, we can't, we can't provide consequences to students that, where they haven't been taught what should happen. You know, as an elementary person, I'm a firm believer, and we can't chastise and, and be punitive if we've not done our part to teach. So I think all the way from kindergarten on, it's our responsibility to kind of teach those expectations. And then, of course, then hold the students accountable for them. But I think it's important that we teach all of these things through an educational component, which I believe does exist in here.
The other thing I want to know is, what is the school liability for a student? Where I taught, the, the child, the, the school was actually responsible for, for the child from the moment they left their home and came to school to the moment they got back home. And so I didn't know if that was, if that held the same for a minute.
We follow that same nexus, yes. So the walk to school, the walk ride home, all fall, fall under our purview for making sure students get to school, safety, and home.
And what happens, should something, you know, if the SRO is not available to give a child a ride home? How, how, how do you maintain safety for a student that may have to find a way home to, from extracurricular activity or whatever?
Oh, we have other people in the school who could give that ride. I think the point the chief was trying to make was the fact that a student would approach an SRO and say,
Would be, would feel comfortable.
Feel comfortable and trust the SRO to get them home is part of that relationship and connection that we're trying to establish. So yes, we would have other people who could, who could serve in that role. But I think the chief was using that as an example of this is a way that we would show connection and relationship.
Okay, I just, that's it.
I'm not speaking for you, but-
You're doing perfect.
I thought that's what you meant.
You're doing, you're doing well. And I will just say, in speaking with, again, if you reckon, harken back to our presentation six weeks ago when we did talk about the, the triad of the school resource officer and then, so that's, that is the, that is how we're, we're hoping to see this. And once we get this all stabilized, that's, that's what the, the menu will be, if you will. And one other thing, I, I just wanted to make sure that everyone is, so that everyone here is aware. I think we pointed it out at the board meeting as well. This document that we started with went from six pages to 12 pages to almost 18. So just for the record, we, we, we have been adding quite a bit of material to this to kind of put some more meat on the bone.
So we're gonna have one more, and then we'll go to public input. Eric?
So just to be sure that I understand, what we're actually talking about in terms of having SROs in the schools is continuing something that has already begun?
Yes.
Okay. But, or formalizing it.
More formally, yes.
But, but maybe two new things. One is that there are a lot of description terms in this agreement that may have been not formalized before, in terms of the relationship between the SRO and, and the school administration, how the SRO functions. Okay, so I, so I have, okay, so I have that understanding right now. I have one question. One of the speakers earlier in the evening talked about the psychological impact of visually seeing an armed officer in the school. And I am not an expert at all in child psychology. I don't know how, how, how this is, and I haven't had a chance to, you know, do any reading about it. But I wonder, is there conversation here or elsewhere about, about open carry versus concealed carry for an SRO?
So, yes, we've, we actually have had some of that discussion. I know even when we first presented to the school board back on October 1st, we brought Michelle Robinson, and we might have done it here, where she actually came up and sort of presented what we would call, I guess, a modified uniform. It would still be open carry, but as opposed to a concealed carry, we're not sure who that person might be. But most police administrators would want their officers clearly labeled. Police uniforms, where all these things on it, everyone knows who we are when we walk in the room. But we recognize that there's at least some impact of that. And that is why we've decided to try to go with what we would call a, a modified, a softer uniform. And so that's, I guess, my, my quick response to that concern is that hopefully, indeed, we do have officers who have a band of black and orange polo shirt that says Tigers on one side and Police on the other, or something like that. So that would be, that's my goal with regards to a uniform. But yes, they would have an open carry. And, and I think with the belt with the variety of different tools on it, gives them more tools. Should they need them, they have more, they have access to more and lesser force options.
All right, I guess it's only fair to continue questions, and then we'll, we'll go to public input. Okay, Melis.
All right, well, some of you guys have asked my question, so thank you for that. I'm, as I looked through this document, I didn't see anything that talked about specific training other than being a police, a sworn police officer. Now, it's, it's 18 pages, so it's very possible that I missed it. But I was looking at, let's see here, Section 1A, Assignment of Police Officers to SRO Program, which is on page two. Basically saying that the city's going to assign two full-time individuals who are employed full-time at the city, certified police officers of the state of Illinois, who meet all the applicable requirements. But there's nothing in there specifically. It does say that, including a successful background investigation, but it doesn't say anything about additional training.
Page five, Section five, A City Responsibilities. I know I've, was a part of this, and I've had to just thumb through it here. The city shall provide two police officers who have or will be given specialized training as SROs. Again, what, what does that mean? Well, right now, that means a one-week class, I think it's 40 hours, on school resource officer training. In addition to that, then there's the juvenile officer certification, and that's another 40-hour class. So those would be two of the basic training curriculums.
Can you say that again? Because it's not on my page five.
On my page five?
Oh, well, oh, oh.
Let's see, Section five, under equipment and working conditions.
Under I?
Five, equipment and working conditions. City responsibilities.
Thank you.
And so that's how we would envision that, as those two basic, one-week-long courses would be the initial training. And beyond that, there would even be, I know there's opportunities that the NASRO has a three, I think it's a 24-hour, three-day advanced class. And I will never underestimate the value of the field training program. So when we have a new officer, we hire them, they don't graduate from the academy, and we turn them loose, they go spend four to five months riding with someone else. It's our vision now, and as we've done this in the past, when we've onboarded a new SRO, they go with the old SRO. And they get introduced, and they make things, and they kind of go, this is a day in the life. We go to this meeting here, then you got to go here and incorporate those types of field training components.
I was going to add an anecdote. This past week, Thursday and Friday, I was at the Illinois School Board Conference, and there were quite a few safety sessions. And I went to a session on what is an SRO and what is, you know, what is it not? And the person leading the session was a 15-year SRO veteran. And I know Deputy Chief Searls has talked, shared with us some of the NASRO information available. And when we were here before, we talked about, we would have our SRO do some of those things in the summer. We would encourage them to go off, and, you know, when the students were not in session, to have some of those trainings. So I was able to get some, the information from that, that particular SRO, who's been doing this for a long time, who spoke really highly of that training, and how, how much he learned, and how he's really advocated for that NASRO training. So that would be something we definitely, it is, it is lengthy. So we'd encourage our person, our peoples, because Michelle has, would need to do that too, to do those kinds of things in the summer, summer months.
So, so the other part is kind of the murkiness of some of these positions. And somebody, several people have spoken about how the SRO will not get involved in breaking up fights. Okay, so I know that the big incident that happened in February, there was a very big fight in which a teacher was injured, in which there were multiple people that, nine people, 10 people involved, something like that. I would expect an SRO to step in in that kind of situation. Now, that's one extreme.
That was an extreme fight, yes.
Right, okay, yes, so that's an extreme side. And then you might have a fight over, I don't know, a bag of Cheetos or something in the lunchroom. All right, so you got two different extremes. What, what is that line? When does the SRO step in? When, when is the expectation?
Well, and I'll, I'll just start, and you can jump right in with it. It's more of an issue of, again, of severity. As we have people jockeying in line to get in front of someone in the lunch line, and it starts a little bit of pushing and shoving. I don't necessarily expect them to jump on top and say, that's an aggravated battery, and here's handcuff. That's not, that's not how that would, that's not how, what our expectation is. If it's something like the event back in February, when a teacher is knocked to the ground and whatnot, then I would expect them to, to step in. Where exactly that line is, you're right, it's difficult.
So we've heard of fights in the, in the hallways, right? People shoving people and kicking people and so forth, is that a scenario?
Where an SRO would be involved, no.
Where an SRO would be involved, no.
We have, we've, we've talked at length here and at other sessions around the additional support staff that we have in both of our buildings, that we expect them to intervene in those situations. So even if it's just two or three people, you know, two or three girls are fighting, we have, we have administrators, we have student interventionists, we have student engagement advocates, we have several support staff who can respond and will respond quickly. But if the situation is getting out of hand, where adults are involved and people are getting hurt, or we, I don't remember over here who mentioned it, but we want to trust our administrators to be able to make that call in the, in the heat of a, like you said, the February 4th incident was an extreme. But if they were feeling like they were in the middle of a situation where three or four people and more students are joining, and this is getting bigger than what the two or three people that are there can handle, that's why they carry radios, that's why they can say, and we want that SRO to be on-site to be able to intervene quickly if they feel that they cannot get it under control without someone getting hurt.
So it sounds to me like the school staff would make a call, basically, to the SRO and say, we need your assistance.
We expect our school staff to intervene first.
So by default, the SRO would be standing back waiting for a request. That's what it sounds to me.
And they may not be right there watching in that moment, you know, and, and they happen really quickly, you know. So the administrators may get it broken up before the SRO is even there. But if something were to linger and grow and get bigger and bigger, yes, we would, before a, a teacher, again, you know, was knocked unconscious, or students were physically, physically hurt, we would expect our administrators to make that call, and the SRO would get involved.
So in some regard, is it proximity, Chief? So what I'm thinking about is if we are having an altercation at the school system, and the default is that the school staff take care of that. And, and discipline is throughout this document, in which discipline is not the role of the SRO, and it's the role of the school staff. So right now, if you had a fight, and you didn't have an SRO there, you would call the cops if it got out of hand, right? And so I guess what I'm, do you see the parallel that I'm trying to make here? I'm curious if that means that in the SRO, the proximity of them being located on campus just allows for that closer interaction if they need to be called in to, to assist? Is that, is that how you're kind of treating this? I'm just trying to grasp the murkiness.
And I think that, I mean, if all of a sudden, somebody flops out of algebra class at a fight that breaks out, and they slap him in the hallway as the SRO is walking by, I wouldn't expect the SRO to stand there and get on his school radio and call for the SIs while the fight is going on in front of the SRO. Whoa, 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 stop, I would expect them to intervene. And just because they intervene doesn't mean that they handle it all the way to fruition. They can intervene, make referrals, the SIs come down, and then they would hand this off to them.
Okay, all right.
But the role, I guess, what I just want to sound loud, the role of the SRO is not to be there to just break up fights. And, you know, that, it's, it's much bigger than that.
Okay, all right. I have some other things to say once, if, if we move forward with this. But I guess my, my final question to you is, there's a comment in here about the difference between civil and criminal. And the SROs will not be involved in the criminal, sorry, the civil, civil conflict. So I'm on page two, the last paragraph. So I'm on page two, the last paragraph. So it's, so I'm just gonna read this out loud so everybody hears it. "As such, SROs will not be responsible for enforcing school regulations or serving as a school disciplinarian. Likewise, SROs will not become involved in conflicts that are civil in nature unless and until such matters devolve into matters that are criminal." Can you define for me the difference between this, what, I mean, I'm getting into that murky area again. So civil and criminal, can you give us a?
I can try, and what I don't do well, I'm sure the city attorney can help out with. So civil law's gonna deal with disputes between individuals and organizations. And typically, when we deal with our police officers, I deal with things like landlord-tenant disputes, divorce proceedings, child custody issues, those kinds of areas of the law. With regards to the criminal law, that's gonna be the crime, legal punishment issues like the batter, like the fighting and, you know, and those types of things. So the officer's not gonna necess, we want them to deal not with the civil issues, but with the criminal issues at hand. I don't know if that helps a little bit.
I'm just wondering if you can give us some examples in which, like, hopefully the youth are not getting divorced.
But child custody, child custody is an issue that comes up in schools.
So, yes, so we have a lot of parental rights discussions. So a parent may come up and say, you know, my, my, my child just called me from third hour and said that his mother was here to see him, and she's not allowed to have contact with him, and I have an order of protection, or I have some papers on file that say she's not supposed to have any contact. And so the parent, that the other parent might go to the SRO and say, can you do something with this? Because I know she's in the building, go arrest her, she's not supposed to be here. So that would be something that is civil, you know, we keep those papers on file, so we know, and parents are responsible for bringing us when they have orders of protection, or if they are custodial, things happening between families. And then we, we basically intervene in those at the beginning level. Now, if that were to get out of hand, and those two parents then got into some kind of altercation or something like that, that's different. But if it is just a serving paperwork, or, we had this happen in centralized registration, actually. We had a parent who came to register, and then the mother came to register, and they, they were not happy that they were both there, and I stepped in and the administrator stepped in, and we talked to both parents, and we settled it in the office. So that isn't something that we would expect the SRO to?
Break up.
Break up.
Okay.
Well, unless it drives us to the level of noticulation or something like that.
Unless it turns into something more criminal in nature. Is that a good example?
Yes, it's a great example, thank you.
I wanted to ask a question relating to that. So if there's an altercation, there's two students or three students and they're fighting, who then has the authority to put hands on the student to break them or separate them? Is that a civil or an administrative, or is it a police action?
We have people in our building who are trained, you know, to put hands on students, and we do not want people who haven't had that therapeutic crisis training to be restraining or touching students, because there's a very specific way that we intervene in those situations, so as not to escalate the situation. So there are several people at both campuses, we keep a list, so all the staff and all the administrative team members know who has that training and who has, who does not. So people who have that training, they're kind of trained, basically, to respond first and be onsite, be there quickly, so they can be the people to break those situations up.
So that remains something that the school takes care of, not the SRO officer?
Yes.
Okay, are we, Phil Brown?
Yeah, I know Section seven, Withstanding Operating Procedures, outlines what will eventually be written procedures that you'll develop over some time period. Do you think it would take like, what, six months or a year to develop this set of standard operating procedures, or less than that?
I hope not. I think it will be, I think it will be less than that, and I do, yes, and when that becomes, when we get that developed as part of our policy, then I would absolutely.
You can make it public, in interest of transparency, we can put it on our website.
With all the rest of them, yes, sir.
Thanks.
All right, are we, are we pretty much ready then to like engage? Oh, Jared, do you want to do a couple more questions you asked about that? Yes?
Do, thanks. I could say even do another round if we wanna take public input.
All right, do you wanna do some public input? Now, we've had people waiting patiently, so, we've got three. All right, then we'll go back to some more questions. So it might be then that if you would sit in the chairs, we'll have to have public come up.
We will wait.
Thank you. Don't go far, don't go far. Okay, so three people asked to be able to speak at the time, and so I'll call you forth. Linda Reynolds, are you still here, Linda? Okay. Philippe Mancho.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Philippe Mancho, and I'm a proud resident of Urbana. Unfortunately, I actually feel compelled to say how many kids I have, because apparently the weight of our statement is multiplied by the number of kids and how many times we volunteer at the school. I have two kids. I volunteer at the high school. I'm a proud member of the Urbana School District. I've been a proud defender and an advocate of the dual-language program in the Urbana School System that is helping bring science to the Latino kids in our community. I'm sorry I have to say that, but hopefully then that will weight my statement. I'm here tonight to stress my concern with the proposal to quadruple the police presence in our schools. I'd like to request the city council to table the vote of the intergovernmental agreement with the Urbana School District until a transparent and research-based discussion that includes the relevant community groups can be carried out. We need more time as a community to research and plan this enormous expenditure of public, public education funds. The process by which the school board approved this agreement last week has not been transparent, inclusive, or allowed for even minimal public participation. The seventeen page, apparently now it's eighteen, intergovernmental agreement regarding the addition of SROs was not released to the public until after, after the Board of Education voted to approve it. There was no opportunity for public feedback or participation in the process. The Urbana School President decided to ignore the letter signed by more than seventy of us, seventy community members requested not to approve the SRO extension. And moreover, I know there are some emails, word Dennis, that were sent to you and sent to others that actually were not reported by your initial account. These, not yours, these don't look like good-faith actions to me. This is clearly a controversial issue, and as it happens in rare occasions, the Urbana School Board was divided in their decision. They marginally approved this agreement by a narrow four-to-three vote. I'm grateful to board members Anhul, Peggy Patton, and Ruth Ann Fisher, who had the courage to dissent and voted against this agreement. The school board decision process has been a disservice to the people of Urbana. And while the city council is in no way responsible for the poor governance of another government body, the council is now in a position to either continue this hastily, secretive, and exclusionary approach or to rectify it. Bad process is not a major concern when the issues are minors or the solutions are obvious. But this is not a minor issue, and the solutions are not obvious. Indeed, there's, there's a body of peer-reviewed research that unequivocally states that SROs do not make our schools safer. This comes instead from building positive school culture through positive relationships. While many SROs can serve this purpose, and we have heard time and time again that they do, and they have our most, you know, the most respect from the community, so can other positions. Other positions that come at a substantially lower cost. We know the SROs are helping their community, they're giving rights, they're helping with issues of poverty, they're even marring some of the students. But so others, adults, can do it at positions that have a lower cost. I would also like to know how this spending will be evaluated for effectiveness, how future security needs will be determined, what kind of community oversight this would have, what measures will be put in place to ensure that my tax dollars aren't further contributed to the school-to-prison pipeline? I would also like to add, I'm certainly not a legal expert, that the school works and acts as locoparentis. So the school has, and the school administrators, they act as their parents while the kids are in school. This is in regards to all of the search procedures that we were discussing earlier. I also understand that the city is in need of support and of some financial support, and that this agreement could alleviate some of that, some of that financial pressure. However, I'd like to remind the city council that all of us are Urbana. We're just one community. I therefore would like to ask the city council to consider instead the moral decision of what is best for the whole community, and not just for one government body. Finally, I urge the city council to table this vote until issues of accountability, transparency, participation, and inclusion have been incorporated into this process before a vote is taken and not after. Thank you for your service to our community.
And then finally, Laura Orr.
Hello, good evening. My name is Laura Orr. I too am a Urbana School District parent. I'm an Urbana alum, and I am an active, longtime community member here. So last Tuesday, we saw the vote by the school board, which in my opinion felt rushed and did not include engagement with stakeholders and consider research in a serious manner. So I'm here tonight to urge the city council to refrain from doing the same thing, less than a week later. We need to wait until issues of accountability, transparency, participation, and inclusion have been incorporated into the process. I now present to the council just a few reasons we have to convince this delay in voting. So Urbana schools have employed an SRO since nineteen ninety-three, and I was encouraged tonight to hear that we've at least collected five years of data that was shared. But I ask, why not twenty? That's over twenty years of potential data to look at to inform this critical decision. So where is this data? So why is this not in front of us right now? Why is this not the center of the current IGA and accountability tactics moving forward? So given the lack of attention to this wealth of data, then I assume it has not been tracked. And if that is the case, how do we plan to proceed in tracking this in these future hires? Additionally, we have already temporarily increased our SRO presence in the schools as stated by other people here tonight. Has this presence actually caused a measurable change? And if so, where are those numbers? Why are we comfortable making this SRO increase permanent with no clear exit plan? Going forward, how will the district report to its students, families, guardians, and constituents on the effectiveness of this proposed SRO squad? How will they proceed in determining retention? How can students and parents and guardians and community members know that any records that speak to this effectiveness are being kept? If the council and mayor stands committed to input community stakeholders and students as previously stated, then I have to ask, where is this commitment in this process? If officers are just assigned this role, how can all of these stakeholders feel involved? How will you offer transparent retention procedures? Will you establish a review board? Who gets to serve on that? How will you ensure that is an equitable representation? You should be gathering at this point that your process needs third-party accountability. As you proceed with your desire to quadruple the SROs in our schools, first and foremost, you need a plan, not just hope that it will work. SROs are employees of the police department. Historically, this excuses their lack of knowledge in child development, child psychology, and sound student management systems. Knowledge we require of almost all other staff working in the schools, making high-level decisions about students' behavior. How can we guarantee and require this of our SROs after minimal training? How will you ensure that this district takes seriously trauma-informed training and use this as a basis for their retention? To date, I understand that a good bit of training is coming from the National Association of School Resource Officers. Is this an unbiased, deeply-committed source of training, or one that serves to protect the officer? How will you ensure and record weekly check-ins with school show's social workers, counselors, psychologists? You need to be able to guarantee their ability to collaborate. How will you do this? Data shows that school staff who provide health and mental health services to our children not only improve the health outcomes for those students, but also improve school safety. We see the 1.3 million that USD has spent on these social supports, and we wonder why stop there? Why can't we use some of this proposed 300,000-plus for even more social supports? Why are we asking police officers to be a counselor? Why not just hire a counselor? So again, I will ask the council to pause on this vote until issues of accountability, transparency, participation, and inclusion have been incorporated into the process. And as I've heard tonight, the word murky has been said quite a bit, and I would agree. Why stop at eighteen pages? Let's, let's make it longer. Let's do it. Let's clarify. Let's be accountable. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're gonna go back now to the city council's questions for Jennifer and Brian.
Dennis?
Yes, ready. As soon as you sit down, now you can, go ahead, ask your question, please.
So before I ask questions, and I know we're not in discussion, but we are in committee of the whole, which our rules are a little more lax, so I don't know if I should ask for a straw poll on this or not. But I wanna tell you guys where I'm, where I'm at on this. I just looked through my stuff and not to, I don't wanna keep this here all night. I have about twelve more questions that I was gonna ask tonight. Now, the depth and Chief Seraphin has seen most of these questions. I sent them to him and Deputy Chief Searls last night, late at night. So they didn't have a chance to answer all of them. And I do have a general feeling that the depth and breadth of the document as it's been presented is lacking in enough ways that we all had pretty big questions about what, what was going on. And I, and I still have so many more to ask. And I don't think that hashing it out just tonight with me asking the questions and just getting an answer, I think there's a lot of other things that need to get put into this. And I'm happy to share those things with, with the chief, with the school board, whoever it needs to get shared with to get some more answers put in here. The last speaker, Laura, made a lot of points that I also felt is that there's not, there's big issues here with transparency, there's big issues here with oversights that I don't see any real answers to. I mean, there's boilerplate language in there about them. But anyway, I'm, I, there's no way that I'm gonna be able to support it in the context that it is without getting a bunch of these questions answered. I think we're gonna need more time to do those. And it's not just my questions that are important, it's the public's questions, it's everybody else's questions that have been asked that are also important. So again, I don't know if there's a straw poll, if it's worth it, if you guys wanna sit here, listen to me ask all the rest of these, or if we wanna give time to everybody to come back on this and get real answers to these, expand this, you know. Granted, I know we've, you guys have gone from a shorter agreement to a bigger one to a bigger one, but, you know, this is really important. And I feel like we really got a lot of issues to sort out here. So Dennis, you're, you're our chair, I don't know if you wanna ask everyone for a straw poll or not, but that's where I'm, that's where I'm at. I'm, I'm looking to move to, to keep this in committee and not, and not move it forward. But I'm not ready to make that motion yet without getting a sense that other council members are on board with that.
Is there a deadline or something?
Oh, okay. And I neglected to say during the public input that we on the city council have received a copy of the letter which- a copy of the letter which is signed by, I don't know, 50-plus you're indicating, I didn't count them, people who had questions and opposed the ordinance. I just want to say that that's part of the public record as well, it's not ignored by us. All right, let's talk about that. We have, this can be, let's move this to a discussion, I guess. Yeah, maybe we need to have, well, okay, how about a straw poll then? I mean, yes, Eric.
I just want to respond to Jared. The very first city council meeting I attended went to midnight. We had piles and piles and piles of public input, and I think when the issues are important, that we ought to work through them in front of the public.
Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, Eric, just to respond, sorry for not being recognized here. I'm not saying that we shouldn't.
I think we're a little looser now at this moment to try to understand our next direction.
So I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, Eric. I'm saying that I'm going to need more stuff provided as far as seeing this new language and all that kind of stuff, and I'm not in good faith going to move this as it stands until we start seeing that language, because we're going to have to talk about it all over again. And I don't want to send it to council, even with no recommendation, only with one week to look over this information. I think we're going to need more time.
Well, let's struggle through all the questions that we can possibly manage to tonight, and, you know, if we run out of gas, if we start collapsing, then we'll do something else.
I'm just looking out for Dean, man.
Right, we have, we have at least half an hour here we can continue to discuss and ask questions, and we have the.
Chair, I think Sharice and Bill both had thoughts on my proposal.
Right. So while we have the chief and the head of the school presenting, it's a good time to ask the questions at this time. So Sharice.
I just wanted to know if there is some kind of deadline for us to approve or disapprove or move for a resolution? Is there any deadline set? How long are we allowed to consider this, the question itself? The resolution?
I suppose you could consider it as long as you necessarily want, just so you, but we have indeed at this point been providing, I mean, there's a financial impact at some point, so we have what, again, and I'll just say this real fast sometimes just to the people, and there's 58 funded bodies, and so we pluck them out to do different jobs. And so that pool of available patrolmen officers goes down as we continue to pull them to do different things. So right now, we have one pulled out for that middle school SRO position with the hope being that we would be able to move forward on this.
So my other question then is this, because I keep hearing input, and they say quadrupling. When I, does the quadruple mean the simple fact that we have an SRO that's gone from being part-time to full-time SROs? So that's not quadrupling, that's just making full-time instead of, I'm always thinking, I was watching the school board meeting, it was like, four bodies and four people? But no, it's two people going full-time.
So it's going from .5, which is what we traditionally had for many, many years, 26 years, well, 25, a half-time person who was also a half-time detective, to moving to two full-times.
Two full-times, one in the high school and one at the middle school. Okay, and that's four, I don't do that simple math. I just wanted to, I know I'm not good at math, but.
Four times the service in the community.
Four times the service, yeah. So, and you've had two full-time people at the middle school, you've had one at the middle school, one at the high school, since the beginning of the school year.
So the middle school, yes. The high school has been, yes, one slotted. I guess we've had, so our detective's been there three out of, he works four days a week, they work four-ten, so he's been there three days, and then those Mondays and Fridays, we've tried to supplement that with overtime, so having just, at least, and so some of the officers will routinely sign up for that, hey, I like doing that, I'm comfortable at the school, and so they will fill that out overtime. It's not, that doesn't always fill.
Okay, so my next question is the complaints that you've had from parents and students from these two full-time people being on the premises. Complaints and or comment, negative complaints, mainly negative.
Since this started last February, until, none until we started talking about this agreement. I've not filled it any, I've only been there since July, so.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of, and I don't know if either of our principals are.
Complaints from students or parents, Mr. Principal in the back? Any complaints from students or parents at, you're at the Urbana Middle School, which I also attended, when it was called the Junior High?
No formal complaints, I've got questions.
Questions. Is the principal, you're from the high school, right? How many complaints have you had? Come forward if you need, how many complaints have you had from parents and/or students about the SRO officer at the high school?
Since I've started in July, I've had zero complaints. I've had questions, and I've had dialogue with parents about what the school resource officer does, but I've not had any complaints.
No complaints? So nothing about the officer, like, throwing somebody down the stairs, or knocking somebody out, or putting them in handcuffs and taking them to back to school and beating them with a bat?
Absolutely zero, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to, I really want to understand, because I've heard some, you know, watching the comments on the school board, the school board meeting, it was, it was made to sound as if this was going to, we were going back to the 1920s and red summer or something, and I just want to make sure that I would not be speaking out of school right now, no pun intended, to say that there have not been, the SROs have been, on the whole, or mostly, a stabilizing, at least, a stabilizing force disciplinary-wise at the middle school and the high school.
Well, not, yeah, they don't, they don't.
Well, no, because, see, one of the issues I know that had to do with there being SROs in the first place is the, was the lack of.
Was a result of a discipline issue, sure.
Right. So on some level, there has to have been some type of stabilizing force due to the presence of an SRO officer.
So instead of saying discipline, I'd use the phrase stabilizing culture and climate, because I would say we have a much more positive culture and climate in both buildings. And again, not completely impart to having two full-time SROs, but as a.
Yeah, but you wouldn't have that if you had 1,000 counselors there either, or five, I mean, when I went to high school, it was hall monitors.
Sure, we have those too.
Okay, we had three of them, and they didn't play. Okay, so it, there, I'm just saying, on some level, there has been some stability, some stabilizing reinforcement there, some kind of way, so that kids apparently, or maybe not so apparently, but seem to feel more safe and capable of going, having, going to school and not feeling in fear of something, or I would imagine there would be some parental complaints, or even student complaints from either of those institutions. Oh, somebody keeps, he keeps shaking his head, sweetie, you haven't been in school in a long time, because trust me, babies will complain. They complain about you looking at them wrong.
So right now, talking about hall monitors, we have.
We're not arguing with this, with anybody.
I'm not trying to argue with anybody, but I am trying to state a fact, and that's not something that's just my perspective or my opinion. If I really do feel that if there was some issue, and especially with my experience with teenagers, period, there would be complaints. There would be plenty of complaints. And they're not having been any, it just makes me believe that on some level, there has been some kind of stability put in there, even if it's, and I'm not saying that it's just the SRO officer, it could be that everybody decided to come back with a different attitude than what was going on this time last year. But it could be that, you know, the children that aren't, that were issued last year aren't there this year. There could be a lot of different reasons, but it does, I don't think that having an SRO there on the premises has been a negative one, a negative issue.
And I can see we're now debating as a committee, and maybe what we should do is continue to try to ask the questions, and then we can have time for internal discussion.
Well, I just, I guess my thing would be more of a discussion thing. I've kind of lost track of where we are, but.
Well, we're trying to get back on track.
I, I'll wait till.
We might have to have a motion to actually really get into our discussion period, but, okay, Bill.
I would like to adjust Jared's concerns about process and what we can accomplish tonight. I think, I mean, my preference, I think this is going to go back to the school board. I think we're probably going to end up making a change or two, and I think it would be good to do that partly because when they debated the first time, they hadn't published the document, so people didn't get a chance to look at it until after they passed it. So I think it would be, you know, I'm sure the chief and others would be discouraged to drag it out, but they have a meeting in mid-December, and I'm sure the school board members might not be pleased about having to sit through another two- or three-hour meeting if that's what it comes to. But I think that's probably the best way to do it moving forward and to increase transparency. But I think we can discuss it enough, keeping in mind that Section 7, which takes up about half this document, is, I think it was.
Starting on page six.
Yeah, is outlining the standard operating procedures. It's not the procedures themselves. So they're general topics that don't have to be too specific probably right now unless there's something that you just can't agree with or don't understand. But just keeping that in mind, I think we can get through it and make some changes tonight, maybe make more changes next week, and send something back to the school board for their December meeting, and then they can make the final approval, or they can change it or not, but then they'd give the public an actual chance to see, to see the document before they vote on it. I do have a proposed change for Section 8 on the review, and I'm not sure when the best time to bring that up would be. Yeah, so enough something's on the floor, I guess I can't really propose an amendment to it, but.
Probably not.
However you want to do this.
All right, so we're going to, you know, we can have questions, can we continue to have questions? We can have questions if we make a motion to do something or another, unless we want to just keep this in committee.
So I guess my statement.
Yes, Dean.
Thank you, would be appropriate, then. I got off track of where we were a little bit there, it was probably every, Chief Seraphin made a statement that there was some financial urgency in this issue. He's not wrong, but I'm going to give you a better issue, and that's the safety of our children and the staff at the schools. We can't keep screwing around with this. This has been long, long, long overdue. As a police officer here for 15 years, as a parent of two girls that have attended the schools here, one still is attending the school, I don't think anybody here can argue with me that I'm not well-tuned to this issue, okay? I'm also a licensed substitute teacher, and the chief of police at a college where we have 12, approximately 12, high schools coming to our school for dual credit. And I was hired there to start a police department, and it's made a huge difference. Our officers are going to school, as I speak, to be SROs, to be CIT officers, and to be, I lost track of it, juvenile officers, and it's making a huge, huge difference with the hundreds of high school kids that we have in our school. But the main point here is the safety of our children and the staff at the school. The children have been battered in ridiculous fights with mob action, and so have the teachers. Let's not get distracted by some baloney that's obviously meant to distract and derail this process. We need to get this done. There's a lot of people that are very upset about what's happened in the future, and we've just got on a good roll, we've got some good forward motion going with the new superintendent here, and I don't want to screw it up. So that's my statement on that. If, you know what, if we have to sit here till 2:00 in the morning and I have to call in sick tomorrow, let's get some coffee and some Red Bull and do it.
Then who would like to continue to comment, to, well, okay, we're going to have a motion, and then we can continue, right?
All right. I'll move to send ordinance number 2019-11-067, ordinance, oh, wait, that's not it. 2019-11-05OR, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement with the school resource program, intergovernmental agreement to city council with recommendation for approval.
I will second that.
I have an amendment.
Okay, Dean Hazen, seconded it, and there's an amendment, so go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I'll move to add this section on page 13, Section 8. Put an A in front of the current paragraph, make a paragraph B, and paragraph B would say, "Every two years, the Urbana School District shall conduct an evaluation of the SRO program. Various facets of the program will be reviewed, including costs, pre- and post-program data, standard operating procedures, and feedback from school administrators, students, and community members. Focus groups and surveys may be utilized in obtaining additional feedback, and results of the evaluation will be made publicly available."
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, we've got amendment that's been seconded by Mary Alice Woom.
I'll speak to it just.
Okay, Bill, speak to it, and then we'll have Eric comment.
Just, the current Section 8 paragraph doesn't mention anything about students, parents, or community members. It strictly says feedback would come from building principals, and it would go to the UPD, doesn't say anything about the community members, other stakeholders, and doesn't say that it would be made publicly available. So I think this would clarify it and improve the review process.
Okay, Eric.
Yeah, I intend to vote in favor of the amendment, since the vote on the school board was a close one, since opinion in the community is divided. Frankly, I would have voted to support this without this amendment, and, but, and I'll say why that is when we vote on the whole package, but the amendment, I think, is made necessary by the need to have full transparency, to have full accountability to people in the community who have differing views. And so, so let's do it. I think, I think one of the things that I heard when I listened to the opposition is, what I heard were, the objections to this program were, some of those objections were hypothetical, and some of them were based on bad things that had happened in other communities. And it's absolutely true that there are very good examples. I tried to do a little bit of research, and there's a very good, actually, document from the Children's Defense Fund, which talks about how to do SROs wrong and how to do it, how to do them right, and with examples, and I would really commend anybody to look at that. I believe, you know, I really have confidence in you that this will be done here the right way, but I also have a lot of confidence in transparency and openness and taking everybody's views into account, and that's why I'll support this amendment in spite of the fact that it's going to throw a little sand in the gears of progress towards our final decision.
Mary Alice.
I think it's timely that ProPublica was able to expose the isolated timeouts in the state of Illinois, and one of the biggest exposures to that was that these were occurring without review, and not all schools had a review process for what was going on, and which led to, we'll say, an erosion of the original intent. I think that everybody who's been involved in this process has good intentions. I truly believe that. I think that people have the best interests at heart for the children in our, in our school district. But we don't know what's going to happen in the future to our good intentions. And I spoke to the mayor today, and I said, this is probably my biggest issue with this document is basically the accountability. How do we? How do we, at the end of the day, review and take a step back and say, 'How did we do? Did we achieve our goals? Did we, were there things that happened that we didn't anticipate? Were there negative impacts?'" To me, this is a really big part and it's something that's really important for this document. So I just want to repeat that I do think that people have really good intentions, but there's things that are unforeseeable. And I, so for that reason, I really think that this is something that needs to, I will not support the entire thing without this amendment passing.
Okay, very good. Jared.
Since we're just talking about the amendment before we go on to other subjects, Bill, I wish I would have taken your step here and written my own amendment because I didn't realize what this little piece of paper was when it was sitting on my desk. But my, my only, my comments to fellow council members and even, Bill, since you wrote it, is, well, before I make my comment, let me ask, because this was a question I was going to ask anyway, I want to ask the chief and the superintendent, what was, I mean, the review, we talked, a lot of people at your board meeting brought up the issues of transparency. And I know the school board has said that's a goal and that's obviously a goal of the city. We try to make an effort to be transparent as well, but it didn't seem like there was a lot there for community involvement in this, in this document. And now we're proposing an amendment to add some sort of community involvement, but it doesn't, I would have, I'm wondering what your, what your guys' thoughts are on involving that process because it was not included, because Section 8 is probably the shortest section of the entire document. It got the least amount of thought in my, in my mind as other sections, and I know this has been an ongoing process and it's kind of a working document. So I'd appreciate your thoughts and I will make my comments to the, to the council on review processes and community involvement.
Sure.
In the program.
So I did walk through this, all 17 pages in its entirety at an open meeting. I know many people in the room that have talked at the last couple of meetings were not at that meeting. There were some people there. It isn't, hasn't been our practice under previous administration or to put out drafts so they can kind of walk around the community because they are draft. So we're not required to put those out for public. But we walked through it visibly, basically as we're doing tonight. So I displayed it. The chief and I walked page by page by page through with our board, and they did exactly what you guys were doing. We asked questions, they asked for clarity, we invited administrators to talk. So we've polled students, we've polled teachers. I know Mr. Roberts shared a few emails that you've gotten. Well, I've gotten probably four or five times a number of that since we started having these discussions in September. So we've had several open meetings. Again, I, you know, until this was being put to a vote, honestly, there was not much community input. We presented a slideshow at our open session to very few people. I know when we came here to present, there were very few people here to ask us questions at that time. But we've, we've talked to our stakeholders, the people who are in the schools, the staff, the teachers who are there every day, and many students. So I didn't bring all those numbers with me, but we've talked to some of the student groups, like Student Senate. Our principal unfortunately is not here tonight at the high, from the high school. He's out of town, but he talked to a couple of his student groups and got input from students. We've been trying very hard to incorporate student voice in this process. So I think most of the conversations that have been had have been had within the school community, not openly in the Urbana community per se, other than the open meetings that we've had, which we've had several.
Right.
The review part.
Well, I guess there's two, I see the review part as being, I guess, made of two different components. The first of all is that review of that particular officer's performance, some of those types of things. And I think I'd said that earlier, where we had done that over the course of, even with the halftime quarter splits of SROs, we had, we had traditionally gone back and reached out to the school. How's it working? What's not working? Are you getting enough service in your, through this program? The bigger issue now with regards to, you know, like as far as the program itself, is this, is this working? Matter of fact, Deputy Chief Searls and I had had some conversation even prior to, when you and we had talked, it's like, how do you do that? What are some of the things that we are looking for? And, and I think we had some valuable conversation. I don't know that we had actually come down to this is exactly how we want, we want to do this. So, you know, with regards to, I think Bill's piece with regards to students, parents, and, and community members, as long as we can somehow facilitate that in a somewhat timely manner that, you know, that doesn't necessarily, isn't a giant resource, I think, I think we can absolutely probably figure out something, a way, a way we can make this work so we can get everybody's input and then, and then move forward.
Sure. So I guess Charlie's telling Dennis that we're going to have to make a motion to extend the meeting, I'm sure.
At 10:30.
Oh, that's right, 10:30.
We have until 10:30.
So I guess that's one of my, I mean, you just touched on a point of issue that I had in large, and I kind of articulated this to you when we had our discussion the other day of, superintendent, you were not there, obviously this is a discussion I have with the chief, just about the, you know, when I am creating a policy for the people who work for me, my job, I don't think about it in my head, write down an idea, tell them I'm going to do it, and then try to articulate it later on down the line. It needs to be all spelled out from the get-go. How is this going to work? What are we going to do specifically? You know, this touches on a bunch of different things that I have questions about because there are not specifics. There are not measurable deliverables in a lot of these things where it's like, okay, well, this is something we're going to do. How are we going to do that? And I know Eric has expressed that we are in some sense taking a step of faith to allow you guys the time and process to do that, but I also think that this is a community-driven and sensitive issue that needs to have involvement, that extends beyond just, we trust you guys to do a great job, not that we don't. I couldn't agree more with Eric that I think that you guys are great leaders and have the best intentions for the kids at heart, but it's just an issue that takes a little more nuance than, you know, a simple agreement. That being, that being said, I will touch back to the amendment, just a comment to make. If I realized this, I would have, I would have extended this to be even more comprehensive, Bill, as far as review process is concerned. Our agreement that we're going for is only two and a half years. We've, you articulated in your amendment, two years for review, but I almost feel like that's, that's clearly too, too long before we even come to our first review process, especially with something that is so sensitive. There are other things that probably don't need to be reviewed as much, but police interaction with students is a very, very sensitive thing, and I feel like we've got to keep on top of that. The other part of that is review also brings up, to the word to me, oversight and, you know, accountability. Chief and I had a little bit of discussion about who the, who the officers are responsible to. They have a lieutenant who oversees them personally and kind of administrates that, but they also have some feedback directly to the school district as well. But a lot of constituents of mine and people in the community have raised the issue of responsibility to the community, and I think that's more of a need for community involvement in not necessarily disciplinary action against officers or anything like that, but just in the culture of the program in and of itself and saying, "These are the things that we value." I think a lot of people have seen both sides of this, just as I do. I support the idea of doing it, but the way in which we do it is extremely important, and I think that we're not putting in enough, and I'm saying this to you too, Bill, emphasis on how we're going to do that. You know, for example, focus groups and surveys may be utilized as announced. I would, you know, use a language like "shall be utilized" or "will be utilized," but I, you know, I would love to have something that, you know, articulated how that could happen in a better way. I mean, it's just open-ended, like you said, chief, you know, it's an idea, it's a concept. Can we make it work? Maybe, maybe not, you know? But all these things are on that, so I, just putting this out there for discussion on the amendment, Bill, I'd like to hear your thoughts. Mary Alice, you seconded the motion. I'd like to hear your thoughts on maybe adjusting this a little bit or, I mean, even just two small changes, like every one year or focus groups and surveys shall be, without even getting into big details about what the right way to do it and not do it is and things like that.
Okay, good questions. Bill.
Yeah, I think the current Section A is more about, well, covers evaluating both the program and the officer. I didn't think the officer was necessarily, should necessarily be a focus of the broader review, but Section A would, would cover the program and the officer and be basically between the building principals and the police department, and that would be an annual basis or when requested. I think there would also be, you know, a lot of opportunities for people to comment, complain directly to the principal or superintendent. I think the reason I picked two years was partly because I wanted it to be a thorough process and not, not become just kind of a perfunctory process that you do every year. And it would also give, give us an opportunity to actually get pre- and post-program data. I think in one year, it's really hard to get statistically significant data that, I think one year is just kind of a short sample time. You don't know if something is kind of a sporadic, you know, one, one-time problem when the, you know, when on graduation day was a one-time problem or does it happen every year? I don't know. I think, it was a little arbitrary, but I just think I felt one year was too often and any farther, longer than two years wouldn't be often enough. I also thought that if this is a, does this actually expire in two and a half years?
Yes.
It has to be renewed? So that would give us a little bit of a heads-up before the expiration date to get the review completed? That was my thoughts.
Can I respond, Mary Alice?
No.
I just wanted to, while we're going with that before, Mary Alice. Well, what about if we included language to the, to the effect of like, at the first collection will be after the second year and then every year following, every consecutive year following after we've had a chance to collect enough information? The chief did point out that not all information that's going to be collected about this is going to be quantitative. Some of it is going to be qualitative that doesn't need statistical timeframes to be measurable. Just a thought I had when you were talking about that. Would you be open to that idea? Or my other researchers?
I mean, I think I would probably be open to it. I think if we did make it every year, then I wouldn't want to say focus groups and surveys must be utilized, but if you may, if you kept it every two years, I might. So I'll give you one of those, but not both.
I would, I mean.
Mary Alice.
Sorry, Dennis.
Mary Alice, go ahead.
Thank you. Speaking as somebody who does a lot of surveys, it's a lot of work to pull together that stuff, focus groups and surveys, and to do it every year is, is asking a lot. I don't think it's asking a lot to be able to pull some of the numbers that the chief pulled for us today over the five years. How many arrests, different types of interactions that have occurred that are quantifiable. I think those numbers could potentially be provided to us every year and to the school board for you to look and see how that program is going. I think it's a good idea to have a more cohesive evaluation project after, on some kind of cadence. And I would not recommend that cadence be one year, but I guess I'm trying to look for a middle ground here. What kind of information can we get as a touch point to make sure that the, the program is progressing along the ways that we, we had hoped it is progressing? And then what, at what time point can we get a much more comprehensive review? Having it in two years is nice because of the two and a half-year timeframe here, so it would give us six months to then say, okay, are, is the school board interested in continuing this? Is it something that needs to be rewritten? That gives us a good timeframe. So at least for this two and a half-year contract, I would say that it would be good to have within a year, what are some of those benchmark numbers that we want to be able to look at every year? And then at the end of this, in two years, to do more comprehensive. That would be my recommendation.
Eric.
Yeah, so I would think, for example, we do get numbers about traffic stops, and we get those, actually, we get those more often than once a year, or they're compiled more often than once a year. So, so an annual statistical report on, and I'm not sure how to, how to quantify that. I mean, you know, you've given us some numbers, chief, but the, I don't know if there's more finer tuning, like how many, how many student contacts, certainly if there are either parental or student complaints, and of course, we do have, I know, we do have a civilian police review board to which SROs are as subject as any other police officer to be.
Correct.
Complained about through that process. So the, so I would say, I guess I would echo what Mary Alice is saying. I think that statistical data on an annual basis, relevant statistical data, but a more, certainly after the first two years, a more in-depth survey data that, that gives us a basis for knowing whether to continue the agreement or whether the agreement should be, you know, adjust, the terms of the agreement should be adjusted. I think, I think formalizing this is a step in the right direction. I mean, the, you know, we started the program informally without a memorandum of understanding. Now we have before us, you didn't call it a memorandum of understanding, but that is what it is, and I think everybody who has looked at this situation says, yes, you need a memorandum of understanding. People really like, apparently, you know, based on my distracted research during the course of this conversation, Googling with half my mind while listening with half my mind, it looks as though the memorandum of understanding between the city of Denver and the Denver Police Department is, is sometimes held up as, as, as a model. And probably ours, ours may be very, very similar, but it might be worth looking at that for, for some of the features because that's been in place for a number of years and appears to have worked really quite well.
Dean Hazen.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we propose a, or do a motion here that we vote on the merits of this case, okay? And the city council reserves the right to later, at the next meeting or whatever, figure out, or however many meetings it takes, figure out how we're going to impose this statistical question that we have, how we're going to gather statistics. Because it's important that we get this program going, and we could talk a long time about how we're going to gather statistics and what the city's capable of providing. Why can't we do that separately? So could I put that motion on the floor that we separate the two?
There's already a motion.
Well, we have, we do have an amendment here that we probably should agree to or not, and then you want to make another motion? I mean, we have.
Well, okay, just offer it up as food for thought, but.
Can I go for a comment?
Yes, you can.
Dean, would you disagree with the statement that the program is not already active?
The SRO program?
Yes.
They've got half a foot in the door. I mean, they've got a, they've got a half-time person there at best.
I understand that we have two full-time SROs currently.
So, yeah, we have the full-time SRO at the middle school that the city is, is financing, and then we have the split time position. It's, the current SRO is assigned to the high school.
Okay.
With, over, three days a week with overtime trying to cover those other two days. So the high school program isn't quite as uniform as we'd like it to be under.
But we do have a full-time SRO at the middle school.
Correct.
And we are making all due efforts to have a full-time SRO at the high school, five days a week.
We're making efforts, yes.
I'm not saying that, they're guaranteed three days, but maybe not all five days. But you're trying to have someone there all five days.
That's correct.
We're trying, yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm just saying, Dean, it sounds like they're, they're still operating this whether we pass this tonight or not.
But we're paying overtime.
I, I get, I got.
Well, and he's got man, or staffing. Well, and he's got man, or staffing issues set aside for this, and staffing issues, and that kind of thing. I mean, how long do we want to cockfight about this statistical thing? We need to vote on the merits of the case, and we can, can we not reserve the right to do this later and figure this out later when we're not under time pressure?
It sounds like we have two years to figure out exactly how the statistics would be collected.
And can I interject? That's exactly why the chief and I decided on two years, to get, the half year is basically for us to give us some amount of time to post the position, you know, in January, February, and go through an extensive interview process. So really, it would be a two-year timeframe, which was what we were hoping. It would give us a lot of information around when this ends and sunsets in two years, what, what, you know, what were the strengths, what were the things that we could do better, and that we could go back in and change after that time period, or add, or...
And it does seem like even though it was felt by the public that there wasn't enough time to review it at the state where it was introduced by the school board, certainly we're providing the forum today where review is possible, and there's going to be another week ahead of us where, you know, where more public input can be made. So this is where the transparency, the city council of Urbana is the place where transparency occurs. All right, I'm going to go, one, two, three, four. So, Mary Alice Wu.
Okay, so two things. The first one is, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to our amendment bill, which is to set the year period to be the academic year. So at the end of an academic year would be the timeframe for if we're going to do statistics, so gather some kind of statistics. I'm not going to list them tonight, because I hear Dean, when he's saying, we can go back and forth, and we can, so I'll bring something, and other people, if they want to bring a proposal at the next meeting, these are the statistics that we would like to see. So I would say have statistics at the end of the academic year, and that would be my friendly amendment.
That was the term I was looking for. Thank you.
And right, and right now, we have this ending June 30th, which is the end of our fiscal year, as well as kind of the end of our school year.
So we're in line with what you would expect, perhaps.
So Bill, do you accept my friendly amendment?
Well, I mean, if the, if the current, the way it's arranged is going to end on June 30th, it doesn't give you much time to do the evaluation between May 30th and June 30th.
We'd have two, two, well, we were looking at that being part of the whole two-year window, like doing all the data collection throughout that whole time period.
So I guess what I would say is, is that my intention is not to change your two-year time period, but it's to add in that caveat of reporting out some statistics at the end of a school year. So, does that make sense? So I'm not trying to change this. I'm just adding to it.
Whatever works.
Is this the world of compromising?
Yeah, whatever works.
What was your line? Just, so you need to put some words in there.
Stance at the end of the academic year, at the end of the academic year, which also coincides with the fiscal year.
Yeah.
It could read some...
Statistics, yeah.
It could read something like, every two years, at the end of the academic year, the Urbana School District shall blah, 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 blah.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
I was thinking at the end of one academic year, we would just have, like a one-page report, nothing big, that said, X number of arrests have occurred, X number of people have been sent to BAC, like, I'm trying not to go through too many details here, but just having a couple of stats at the end of a school year to say, what happened?
Okay, so you mean like so many, how many contacts with the student, whether it was a reportable contact or not, if something da-da-da?
That's, yeah.
She's not getting into it tonight.
So it's kind of a second level.
Yes.
I think that we could ask as a counsel of our chief at any time.
I was going to say, we, I mean, the chief has to pull that data, I can't pull that out, but we, we're going to be tracking our contacts at the school level, and we don't need a year to do that. I mean, we could do that monthly, semester, every quarter.
I don't think we want to kind of micromanage what goes into the agreement. I think just having, having a requirement that involves the public and that's transparent, will be made publicly available, and has all these components that should be in there, I think is important. But I don't, I think as far as, you know, if you want annual report, or every semester or something, we can just ask the chief for that.
Those would be like step up, upgraded information as the years go by.
All right, I'll withdraw my friendly amendment.
Okay, all right. Did, may I ask you, the other thing that was questioned by Bill, I think it was, was the word "may," or was it you?
That was me, but Bill said he would give me every academic year, or every year after the initial two years versus the shall.
Okay.
So if you're still acceptable to that, Bill, I will, I will offer that as a friendly amendment to you. I will not request shall be changed, but that we report this report.
So instead of every two years, we can say after two years, and every year.
After two years, every consecutive year thereafter.
After, after two years.
At the end of the academic and fiscal year.
And may I, for which, after two years and every year thereafter, I'm not sure, what's the ask here? Because I just, we've got, we've got another governmental body to work with here.
Well, this, I mean, this, according to this, the other body would do it, the Urbana School District would do it. So, you know, that's what we'll pass, and see what the school district passes, I guess. But I mean, I think they're in the best position to bring the people together that have the most, the most stakeholders together.
So, and we're talking about the stakeholder review with students, parents, community members, not necessarily the statistical data?
Right.
Well, Bill's amendment says cost pre and post-program data.
It does have pre and post-program data.
SOP and feedback.
So the pre and post data, the police would have to supply, or probably, I would guess. But the rest of it would be put together basically by the school district, the way it's written.
And we can do that.
And then we'll leave the focus groups and surveys may be utilized, maybe you'd want to do it the first time and not the second time, depending on how much success you have with it, be up to you, I guess.
All right, we're going to allow Jim Simons to, our attorney, to mention something.
Not a mention, but a question. I'm the one that probably is going to end up drafting this amendment. You got it.
Sorry, Jim.
I need language. You've had a lot of good suggestions, and some have been withdrawn, some have been bolstered. Keep on talking as long as you want, but in the final end, I've got to do this, and I've got to do it tomorrow morning, because I won't be here for two weeks after tomorrow morning, or after tomorrow.
Okay, it's the one that I have printed on the slip that I'll get to you if you don't have it, but instead of every few years.
He's got it.
I've got the slip, but whatever, actually, if you could...
The embellishments.
I've got mine marked up.
Yeah.
I'm sure you all do. Send me, if you would please send me an email tomorrow morning or late tonight, and I'll work on it first thing in the morning.
Can I add whatever you send? I mean, I think the last time Jim sent this to us, it was nine pages, so our attorney probably added like six or seven. So...
Just so you know, as counsel person Brown brought up, there were a lot of formatting problems.
Oh, yes.
I have corrected most of those. I think I corrected almost all of them. You will see a lot of changes, but no other than this at this point. No substantive changes, other than what counsel member Brown provides based on the recommendation of our counsel.
So I just wanted to add that out loud publicly, that whatever you send me, of course, will have to go to our attorneys as well.
We charge by the word.
We charge by the word.
By the minute, by the second.
By the word. Mary Alice Wu.
I'm just going to say it's, we've got six minutes to pass the amendment before we can get another motion on the floor to extend the meeting.
And we have two other items on the agenda.
Well, one more. Just the budget ordinance.
No, and there's also a discussion on a resolution. So, you know, do you want to, like, just forward this, it's been discussed that we forward this with the recommendation.
We need to vote on the amendment.
I know we do that first, but I mean, you know, in the, shall we like wrap this and then talk about it next week, if we want to refine anything?
Let's vote on the amendment.
Let's vote on the amendment, then, okay.
I still have questions.
Okay.
But not on the amendment. You have questions on the full.
Not on the amendment.
All right, let's do the amendment then, as modified, which I think means that we're going to do a review after every, a review in one year?
A review in two years, and every year thereafter.
And every year thereafter, and based on the academic year, ending of the academic year. All right, those that favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, we accept the amendment. So section eight now has a part B. All right, and then concerning the entire thing, the recommended, the, the motion was to send it to city council with approval. Are we still happy with that? Are we, do you want to send it to city council with no approval? Are we just going to do the approval?
I'm not happy with it, but I still have questions. Dean said he'd stay here until 2:00 AM, until the sun rises.
And can we, I'm sorry.
So we want to continue to...
I'm going to extend the meeting. All right.
On second.
How long? Till 11 o'clock?
Seven minutes.
On second.
Okay, it's been seconded that the, Mary Lu, Mary Alice Wu, the Wu part gets in there so fast, I can't help, I can't help it. Mary Alice, I'm sorry. It's terrible. We just spent so much good time in France, too. Still having trouble. Okay, my mind. So, all in favor of extending the meeting, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposing? Okay, well, good luck, till 11 o'clock. All right, so other concerns, what else do we need to discuss?
Teresa's got a question before I get into mine.
Yeah, before you get in yours.
All right, Teresa.
The evaluation of the SRO officer, how is that going to go about? I know, you know, teachers get stalled or something. Will that person have goals that are set, and then, you know, they meet the goal, will they be evaluated by the district and the police department, or just the police department, or?
They'd be evaluated by the police department with a lot of input from the school staff.
And on what page? Is there something about the SRO officer being evaluated?
That would be, I guess, part A, what we just went from.
The section we've just been discussing.
Oh, the whole thing with the review?
So, correct.
But it doesn't say anything, it just says, it says...
So SRO performance would be that part of it.
Evaluation of the SRO program.
And the SRO's performance.
Okay, where, where is that?
Section H, that's the part A.
It would be now be part A.
Yes.
The very last...
So is there, is there something, is there an evaluation sheet or something that is, has been developed already?
So, yeah, we have all of our patrol officers have an evaluation form, and I believe there are 17 variables. And so these are the core competencies, and then they would flow over from that job, and instead of...
You modify it for the SRO?
Like the citizens, that would be, oh, the citizens in this case would, were the students in their case.
Okay.
Other concerns, questions?
Well, all right, one more.
One more, go ahead, one more.
I asked, I guess I asked that question because basically it says, the designee, the superintendent or designee shall collect feedback from building, building principals regarding the SRO program, and feedback to the UPD via chief designee, blah, blah, blah. But it, it doesn't necessarily say the SRO officer specifically? That's all. That's why I was, that's why I was confused about who, who does the evaluation, how the evaluation, what the format is going to be, or how that format is going to take place.
Yeah, so I guess I, the best I can say at this point is the SRO would be evaluated by us with input from them on our current forms, with extra pages added on by what, if they have something that we have some, hey, the principal would like to write, and like, has got some feedback and whatnot, a couple paragraphs on the performance of their SRO. We would take that and include that.
So can, I was going to say, can you expound upon that within your section eight, SRO program and SRO review? I mean, just, you know, give...
If we're in B, we can shell out a little bit of A, too.
A little bit, a little bit more detail, please, chief.
So can I make a request? I'm getting ready to dismiss the two administrators who have to receive students early in the morning.
Yeah, they have to go.
On their last day before a long break, and so it's going to be a very interesting day tomorrow. So if you have any specific questions for them that related to school input that you'd, before I have them leave, other things not involving the agreement, but maybe if you'd like to ask them any of their opinions or any input they've had. I know Ms. Officer Robinson has already left for the evening, but I know Dr. Weemel works very closely with her, so I'm sure he could share some insights if you have specific things for the schools.
All right, so any opinion about that? Yes, Mary Alice.
I, I would be curious in terms of what types of questions the principals have been receiving, because they said that they've been getting questions about the SROs being in the school, but there wasn't any further information about that. So if you wouldn't mind.
This is where you earn your pass to go home.
Happy birthday.
Yes, thank you.
It's been a wonderful birthday. It really has. Most of the questions came at the very beginning of the year, when we had more of an SRO presence than in comparison to previous years. And so some of the questions were as simple as, why is there a police officer here? And a lot of students went just straight up to Ms. Robinson, or whoever the SRO sub what, not sub, but it was a rotation of different people at the beginning of the year, before Ms. Robinson was officially placed as the, the full-time SRO. And it was, why do you carry a gun? What, why do you carry handcuffs? Like, very, just like, direct questions that students were just curious about. And so all of the conversations were around school safety, were around here to help keep the school safe and help keep you safe. And it was a lot of conversation around intruder. And so she was also very involved in our intruder drills that we do once to twice a year. And so the questions were very simple, like, what's her role? What does she do? Is she here to break up fights? There were some of those questions. And so very similar questions to what adults have asked. It was mainly coming from kids. Occasionally, I had a parent or two ask the role of the school resource officer, and it's the same conversation that we have had the last couple of weeks. But it was mainly, I, less than 10 times was I asked, or was she asked, as the school resource officer?
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
For me, I think it's a little bit different, because we do have kind of a rotating basis of who's there. I mean, obviously, Officer McCartney is there Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, but then on Mondays and Fridays, it could be somebody different. And if he gets pulled to go work a case, it could be, you know, just officers coming off the street. The one, the one concern that was brought to me was by a student. No parents have brought concerns to me this year, but the student has previously been a victim of some extreme bullying, has been involved in several things. And there were some rumors of some things going to be happening, so I had asked the resource officer to keep an eye on that student, just kind of, you know, make sure that he was not being targeted by any other students. And he wasn't. And so the student said, why is, you know, why is the officer near me? I said, just trying to make sure you, you're safe. And so once I explained that to him, he was like, oh, yeah, right, because I don't want them messing with me. So that, that was the only concern brought to me.
Okay, very good. Jared?
Perhaps you guys can, I was going to ask the chief and the superintendent this question as well, but I'd be interested to hear your perspective. Having read through the transcript and watched the last couple of meetings pertaining to this, I hadn't realized since the deans have been dismissed that there was another intermediary form of, I don't want to call them disciplinarians, but I don't even know what the proper term for them is, but the SEAs and the SIs, and their implementation into the system. And I guess this is a question for you guys both as well. You guys were both here prior to the dean's being dismissed, or you guys both knew since that happened?
Julie's new this year.
I'm brand new this year. I just started in July.
Okay.
I've been in the district since 2007. I taught at UMS then, and then I've been in the district in different roles, mainly directorship roles. I was principal at the high school for one year with deans, as an interim principal, so I've experienced.
Okay, so you have some experience with that, with that program?
Mm-hmm.
So it's kind of a two-part question. What, in what ways do the SEAs and SIs differ from what, how the dean program was structured, and what is their current interaction, and how do they work with an SRO? Is there a escalation level that happens in some situation to get to an SRO? Is there a escalation level that happens in, in some situation to get to an SRO in between those two? To, just, I want to know the difference between the deans and these guys and how they're interacting now with SROs.
Sure, I'll speak first, um, because the high school, middle school, we don't have SIs, student interventionists, at UMS. UHS does, um, we, but we both do have SEAs, student engagement advocates. Uh, we have restorative practices facilitators at UMS, and those, there are three of them. And then six student engagement advocates at the middle school level. We also have three counselors, three social workers, three clinical professionals. And so, we have a team of about 25 people that are all mental health providers, so counselors, social workers, clinical professionals, student engagement advocates. They're broken up by grade level. And so, um, the very kind of first line, the, kind of the tier one, um, and all the way up to tier three, so tier one, tier two, tier three, in terms of needs of students, are all addressed by the, those staff members and administrators. So what used to be in place with deans, it was mainly just a, a grade level administrator and a dean and a counselor per grade level, and then one or two social workers spread across the school. And none of the other support systems were in place, or support personnel were in place. And so, the deans were main disciplinarians and handled most of what was going on in collaboration with an administrator and a counselor. No longer, we, we no longer have deans, and so the discipline piece is shared across all of those roles, the mental health roles, but, and then the primary, um, the, the, the more serious behaviors of repeated issues of disruption in the classroom or in the hallway, or the fights, or the more serious things are handled with the restorative practices facilitator and the grade level administrator, or me as principal, um, when it reaches me. And so, the SRO doesn't get involved until it is either, um, something that has reached the level of a crime was committed, either outside of school or inside of school. So one of the conversations earlier around what's the difference between a civil and a.
Criminal.
Criminal, was, so if two students are fighting, they fight, it's broken up, they're done, that's a school disciplinary matter. If two students fight and there's a weapon involved, then that potentially could be a crime that involves school resource officer, right? That's a really serious one that very rarely happens, if ever. Um, what the SRO gets involved with more so than not is outside, online social media, outside things over the weekend that happen. A family comes to school with their child and wants a police officer to have, either to file a police report or have a conversation around, um, the possibility of filing a police report, and the school resource offers, officer takes that. Another common one is the linkage with the youth assessment center. So if a student has been referred to the youth assessment center for outside services, or if they're on a station adjustment for some, a crime that, that they committed, uh, anywhere, um, the school resource officer is the link between the youth assessment center, the case manager for the youth assessment center, and our students and families. And so, they're meeting every Thursday to do that. I gave a lot of information, and so I would say, the school resource officer doesn't, doesn't get involved until it's the broader outside need for linkages outside of the school. A really serious issue that happens either in school or out of school that's brought into the school. Or gives me, like, I'll go to her, we meet regularly around bigger issues that are happening in the community and their impact in the school, and it'll be more of like an engagement level with me to help problem solve. Um, and she also does more of the teaching. So Dr. Ari Tatum mentioned that earlier, where she's doing more of like, social media education and how different things that are being done online are potentially really problematic from a crime perspective, right? And so, I'll pause for a second and see if you have questions. What's different is that the SIs at the high school function more similarly to the deans previously, whereas we've dispersed those roles and responsibilities across multiple people.
And at the high school, the SIs do function very much as deans, but also have the ability to run the restorative practices. Um, we, we've really this year talked about how the restorative practices go hand in hand with the consequences. So, they're there, walking the students through those, um, consequences, as well as the restorative practice, the restorative piece, so that they are able to, you know, reintegrate with whatever happened, um, before the incident of whatever it was. Whether it was disrupting class, maybe they run a circle with a student and the teacher and, and, and try to get them on the same page. Our SEAs also, also function in that role, running circles and things like that, um, restorative practice circles with, um, teachers and other students to, um, whether it's about student engagement, attendance, try to get resources for our students. I can say this year that, um, that the SRO doesn't get involved unless we ask him to, but has gotten involved for things like when a student, um, was having some problems with domestic violence. The student asked to talk to the school resource officer, um, and, and the student's father asked for that as well. So, you know, for those types of things, just over the weekend, the school resource officer was texting me very early on Saturday morning, um, with an incident that needed my attention, and so, that was investigated and all of those things. He came, he came in and worked that over the weekend, so it's not just, um, you know, he's gone and doesn't think about the school. I think that those are some important things to note. But I, also, we've talked about the school resource officer in the past has gone into our driver's ed classrooms and talked to our students who are learning how to drive about what they need to know when they're out on the road. Once we have someone who's there full-time, I, I would like, I envisioned having, looking at some of the college and career readiness, maybe start looking at, like, I know that there's the explorers program, and how we can have something at school for students who maybe don't have that link, and, and having the school resource officer be kind of a, and in that counseling role, and talking to students about how they, if they want to go into law enforcement, what their options are, and, and what they need to do, and, and that type of thing, just as another person to help push that career, um, for our students, so.
How many total, uh, mental health staff would you say you have then?
We have, I have four student interventionists who function as, um, they do the circles and they also do discipline. I have four SEAs, I have two one and a half clinical professionals, um, two social workers. I have 12 SRSs who are our student relations supervisors, who are in the hallways, kind of those front lines, um, working with students as they come into the building, being kind of the eyes and ears of the hallways, what used to be called the hall monitors when you were there. But, but they, they build relationships, too. We've got some students who really have connected to our SRSs and can go to them, and then they, you know, um, they're kind of some of those frontline people.
Loved our hall monitors, we absolutely loved them. And they, like I said, they were the, they were the line of, of discipline.
Our first line of.
Yeah, so long ago, but yeah.
Yeah.
One other thing I'd, I'll mention is, the way in which we track on our behavior management systems is, we track the number of restorative circles and restorative chats that we do. And this semester alone, with the full-time school resource officer, we've had over 500 restorative circles and chats done this year, across the three grades. So that's, I, something I want to make sure and say out loud, because, um, that's, some of those have been with the school resource officer in the circle. And so, the restorative practices are taking place, and that's a, the biggest reason why the school is doing better this year, is a better implementation of restorative practices.
So I didn't end up getting a final count. You were going through all those. I've got.
Four, four, eight.
Four, four, 12, 22, 23 and a half thus far.
Yes.
Does that sound about right?
I think that sounds about right.
So, so over 20, 20 staff who are in some capacity or in full capacity dedicated to mental health.
Absolutely.
Restorative practices and things of that nature. So I, I asked you, uh, to describe that relationship, uh, because I had a question, listening in the, in the meeting about, uh, a lot of the reasoning why, uh, in, uh, you specifically touched on this, why, uh, and a lot of the board members touched on this, why support was being given to this idea is because these folks were asking for this person, that they felt like they couldn't do their jobs correctly without this person on their team.
So I.
Right, and, and I'm, and I just, being outside the system, I don't see, uh, their connection to that team. So that's why I'm asking these questions, and why they're, what their relationship is to these other folks, because it sounds like, uh, the SRO has a very different role than the rest of these folks do. They're kind of the end of the line, or, you know, they're, they're dealing with issues that are maybe outside the scope of these folks. I'm just curious as to your thoughts on where they fit into this piece of the puzzle that makes them so essential.
I think that, speaking from what Joe has said and from what I know, um, with Michelle at the middle school every day, all day, she's able to be a part of those conversations and a part of those restorative circles. Where right now Darren's only with us three days a week, um, and then sometimes on Mondays and Fridays, people do fill in, right? Um, and so, I think having that consistency of that same person there, um, can kind of help. It, they also bring, the school resource, resource officer also brings a neutral ear to things. Um, you know, they're not, they're not the teacher, they're not the administrator, they, they can help come in and bring a neutral ear, I think, and oftentimes, students are looking for that, and parents, too.
So she, she fits in multiple areas of the, kind of what we call the multi-tiered system of support, so when I was mentioning tier one, two, and three. So the tier one level, she's doing a lot of the, uh, the classroom conversation, the bigger group level conversation around, being proactive around trends that are happening amongst middle schoolers, and most of that is social media usage, right? So she's doing more preventative work there. At the tier two level, she's having those conversations with, within those circles around, this has happened, this is what could happen, if you did this outside, or when you're an adult, if you were to do this, this is what this would be, look like in the eyes of the law, and this is why it's not okay to continue doing that. If this, you know, and she's at each level of the tiered system of supports. Um, and one of the biggest things that is, that I did not fully comprehend before moving into the principal role is, I've said this, well, last, at the board meeting and tonight, that linkage to the outside services and linkage to the outside community, that was a huge gap in our system last year, when students were working with the youth assessment center and working with family counseling or working with one-on-one counseling outside of school, being held accountable through a, a, a station adjustment for being in trouble outside of school. We had no linkage there, we had no way of holding that accountable in school because we didn't have a connection, like we do now, with her meeting weekly with the, with, um, the youth assessment center case manager.
Okay. Sorry, Dennis.
Well, I'm just watching the time, and I, I mean, I, I. I think we're like establishing the value of the, uh, the student resource officer. I don't know if there's any question about the value of that position still in the council's mind, and I'm just wondering if, if we've established enough to support, um, moving this forward, rather than talking some more tonight about it, in that we have two other items on our agenda.
I did have a point to all my questions.
Yes, do you want to sum it then, or you want to lead it?
And I still have other questions.
You still do.
Yep. So the reason why I was asking all those questions, to ask you guys about those, and the same goes to the chief and superintendent, is that, given that depth of resources and outside of maybe the youth assessment center link, were you guys surprised to hear all the comments from folks about, especially even in the, the letter that we, that we all got, about the lack of, you know, why aren't we funding more social workers? Why aren't we funding more of these types of folks rather than, uh, school resource officers? And comments on why you think this is more valuable than those resources?
I was not, I wasn't surprised, um, by the concerns. I would say that, um, I had a lot of the same concerns before I was working day to day in a school. Um, I think there's a, I don't think, um, I've heard this stated a couple of times, it's not either or. Uh, I think a school resource officer fits within that system of support, within that system of, a structure to ensure that students are getting their needs met. Um, I think one thing, maybe a way to frame the conversation or the statement from some of our mental health professionals saying it, it's, it's needed to make sure our jobs are more efficient and more effective, is, it's really hard to provide tier two and tier three supports, mental health supports, counseling supports to students, if they feel unsafe all day at school, right? So you have to establish a, 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 some safety and order and, within the school setting in order to meet the underlying needs that kids have. And so, that doesn't mean that the SRO is the only reason why our schools feel safer and more secure this year, but it's a big reason why. Um, I think we're implementing things better, I think our restorative systems are much stronger, um, I think it's all working in tandem, in tandem. And while, you know, concerns, you know, there's, I think the, the concerns that have been brought, they're multifaceted, right? There's concerns around the school to prison pipeline, there's concerns around transparency around the process, there's concerns around the amount, the cost, right? I agree, we can always use more counselors and social workers, um, we already have a lot. And without, I think the school resource officer fits within that system to, to have a system that reaches outside the school walls, which is where most of our support services staff can't reach. That's a big piece, right? It's the linkage to home, it's the linkage to, to the neighborhood, it's the linkage to a variety of areas that we can't, that we don't reach. And the school to prison pipeline is more than just a police officer in the school, right? School to prison pipeline happens due to under-resourced schools, due to, um, biased teaching practices, due to everything that we're always trying to work to improve. And so, a school resource officer, in my eyes, before being a principal, I would have said, yeah, we need more counselors, social workers first. I think we have that now, I think the school resource officer is a piece to the puzzle, to ensure and improve the school.
Thank you. Dennis, I, I apologize, and I apologize to everyone, I'm belaboring so many of these points. I will save any more of my questions, and I will just outline a few things that I would like to see expanded upon, if there's gonna be any chance that I'm gonna vote for this in the full council, and I will not ask any more questions, but I would like to make those known.
That's great, and I appreciate the clarification that you've brought to the general, uh, to our awareness about, um, the role and the purpose of this, and it's seen also by administration and the counselors in the schools themselves.
Just one more thing, Dennis.
Okay, all right, then go to Sharice.
Uh, and, and I just want to add to, actually, um, it's a comment. Sorry, what's your name again?
Joe.
Joe.
Joe Weemel, yeah.
Okay, um, there's something that, that we're, you know, we're act, we, we act like we're gonna solve all the problems of society from the schoolhouse. And the problems of society don't start at the schoolhouse. They don't start with the SRO officer, or ISI, or ESE, or, I don't know all the, all of the, the names, or the letters. They start, you know, the first role model for any child is the one that brung them in, as my mother would say, the parent. And we're not gonna solve, the SRO is not going to be the solution to all the problems, and a teacher's not gonna be the solution, the principal's not gonna be the solution, the school's not gonna be the solution. We are part of the solution, the school, all that is a part of, nothing happens in a vacuum. So whatever issues that some of these kids are having, when they are at school, did not necessarily start at school. But the school is there to help them get through those issues that they may be going through in life, period. And it could be for lack of discipline on the home front, it could be for lack of structure, um, food, there's so many things that affect how, how a student, how safe a student feels, or if you want to go through the hierarchical needs, you know, uh, any of that. So, all I'm saying is that, um, I think an SRO officer is just part of, again, a, a part of the, of, um, a chain of, of, um, of people and resources that are put in place to help another human being get through life, and get through whatever issues that they may have in their life. But they're, they're not gonna be the solution to everything, because we all have to work together, as it takes a village. And the first, the first role model is always the one that's on the home front first, and it moves on from there. And a SRO could be a role model, just like a teacher can be a role model, or a football coach, or even your best friend. You know, all of these people serve as models, I think, in one's life. So, um, I know Jared, you know, you have a lot of questions, but I'm not expecting, um, any one, any one person or any one position to make the difference, because it, it, the difference is going to start with how, it's an intrinsic thing, not an extrinsic thing. It's gonna start from within, is where that difference is gonna come from. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that, that, yeah, there's some things, valid points that you bring up, and I do hope that those. bring up, and I do hope that those, those things get addressed within the document itself. But I just say that to say that, you know, many, many of us that gone to school, we didn't have any kind of officers, some of us didn't have, you know, you didn't have school breakfast. There's so many things that have been put in place since I started school in kindergarten, when the gentleman talked about Urbana being the first school district in Illinois to integrate. Yeah, I know about that, that's the year I started kindergarten. And my parents were integral in that particular action. So yeah, I know all about that. And we thought then, integration would be the saving grace. Okay? So everything, as, as life goes on and things change, everything's going to change, even how we deal with the kids in school. And that's just how it's going to be.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Jared.
Just to make those comments known, thank you guys. My large outstanding issues, without asking clarification and questions and responses for these, one of which was largely centered around the interaction between SROs, SEIs, and SIs, and their respective counterparts in the middle school. I think that that's an important piece, that should probably be included specifically in language in here. I know it's lightly touched on in some of the SOP, but I, again, the more we articulate these things, the less questions there are, the less people in the community are going to question our intentions, or what we're hoping to do. And even if they don't need to be in this agreement, they need to be out there somewhere, they need to be articulated, they need to be open for evaluation, that's something I, that interaction is one. One question before the, what is this, the one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas on the first page of the agreement, where it says, whereas the parties believe that by signing such and such and blah blah blah, the parties can promote the SRO program goals by A, B, C, D, E, and F. Are A, B, C, D, E, and F the program goals, or these are methods by which we promote the program goals?
Is that a question?
Yeah, it's a question.
So yes, these were goals that we, as part of that triad model that the chief spoke of earlier, these are goals that we, these are things that we'd like to see incorporated through our SRO program.
Okay, so these are, A through F are the goals themselves. Have you guys developed any specific program materials or standards by which you're going to do these, or are they just generally listed without specific thought given to, okay, well, this is how we're going to do this? Or do they pertain to specific sections in the agreement?
So those particular program goals, as she had already said, they were drawn, at least from the initial triad model. And those, so our specific materials, because I think that was one of the questions, those materials, we do not, we have not built personally in-house, that's going to, that is part of that, the 40-hour basic training, that's where they're going to get most of those, that, I guess, formal materials, I think is the phrase you used.
Yeah, I was just curious if there are materials by which one knows that they can achieve these goals, or SOP that says, hey, if you're doing this, then you should be able to achieve this, so on and so forth.
Correct, and that's part of that basic training module.
Okay.
I'll move to extend the meeting another 30 minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Any opposed? Okay.
And I think one of the things we talked about before, but I just want to reiterate, chief, under section fives, paragraph A, under specialized, when we were talking about that specialized training, I would like to see some specific details as to those two trainings that we've mentioned, and/or other trainings that we feel is necessary, because I don't know, maybe the, there's going to be other trainings that we feel like we want to add on to that, but I think at least the ones that we know right now should be spelled out in that, in that agreement. It's another thing that I would need to support this. Section seven, the written standard operating procedures, just generally as a comment, I think were semi-comprehensive in some sections, and some sections I felt were important. We touched on one of them in three, E, sub-paragraph three, about the emergency situations, and outlining some of those specific, for examples, both in searches and in interviews. Points four and five, means and methods for SRO intervention, went on towards incidents arise in any school district facility or on school district property, I think we need to spell out what those means and methods are. Same thing goes for five, those means and methods, we need to spell out what those means and methods are, the same as we have done in so many of these other sections. And then I just want to reiterate that section eight, we have added that amendment for oversight. I still think we need to mention something as far as review of the officers, is concerned that they're still subject, chief, to the same complaint process through the civilian police review board, because they are, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can we put something in there that just says that these officers are not exempt from review from the civilian police review board? They are subject to all the same review processes that regular UPD officers are, because that's not articulated in here.
Which one is it, Jared?
That's section eight, the SRO program and SRO review, to which we added the bill's amendment. That's something, also, I'd like to see-
Well, and, and, okay. I guess my answer would be, I'm not sure just yet. I would assume that they, I mean, they are going to be, I guess, I don't know what the pros or the cons necessarily would be, putting it in here and trying to single them out, as opposed to any other Urbana police officer.
Well, it doesn't need to be, maybe the, well, it doesn't, okay, so when I'm saying the review, the language as it is now, it's about feedback, but it's not, I mean, maybe it's in another area where, like, one of my questions was, who are they, that I sent you in the email, was like, who are they responsible to?
Yes.
Is it, is that outlined in some other section here?
No, that's, no, I'm, because it, because it, here's, here's one of, one of the things, as we, as we go deeper and deeper into this, there might be a time when we decide, hey, we're going to, we're going to move the SROs from this particular services division, and we think now, based on, some guy retired, and we're going to do this, that we need to move them over here. So at any time we were to have a, necessarily a personnel, if we had that, then we have to come back to the city council and the, and the school board to try to say, hey, we're going to have them report to lieutenant so-and-so now, instead of in this division. So generally speaking, when we've tried to write policies, we're trying to get quite that specific, so we don't come back anytime we have to make a small little change. So that's sort of my, that's sort of my short answer to that.
Okay. Is there a way to talk about them being generally responsible to the policies of the UPD, or something along those lines, in there? There's got to be some generalized language that does-
I'm pretty sure that's already in there.
That's in there.
I think that's already in there.
Is that already in there?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll look for it and double-check.
I mean, section A, at the very beginning, top, I mean, they're basically meeting all applicable requirements set forth by city, city's police department rules and regulations, so, at the very beginning.
Section 1A.
Section 1A.
Section 1A.
I mean, they're basically being upheld to every standard that any other, being police officer would be held to.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's good, I can see that language in there. Again, reporting in, chief, do we normally outline reporting? As far as, is that part of our SOP for our officers, how they report?
So, well, yes, generally speaking, with regards to the layout of the organization, with regards to patrol division, investigations and services, and then there's an org chart and whatnot, so yes. So yeah, I guess that's, that's laid out with regards to, you would go up your chain of command. In this particular case, for right now at least, we've put them in the services division, because we think that's the most effective way to ensure success.
You and I talked about styles of reporting, narrative and otherwise, that might be useful because of the specialties nature of this position.
Right.
Do we have anything in here that alludes to that, or as far as reporting requirements for the officer, timing, things of that nature?
No.
Okay.
Well, we do have a section where they're, the time that they report to the building, is that what you mean? Like, we have a section in terms of-
No, I'm, I'm talking about their reports to the chiefs and their superiors and-
So, yeah, so I think we're talking about a couple, the words, reports here will have a whole sorts of different meanings. So there's police reports that they would necessarily author.
Right, and that's in here.
That's in it. There's reporting to their, who their, who their commanding officer would be. There's that, and then there's, now there's also reports with regards to feedback loops and things, with regards to section eight, and those sorts of things, so I guess I want to make sure I'm clear on what you're asking here.
I know that the specific who, to whom, but I feel like, you even alluded, do you find value in the narrative reporting process?
Correct.
I'd like to see that get put in there somewhere with them, saying they need to be doing that on, you know, a semi-annual basis at least, if not a quarterly basis or something along those lines. At your discretion, maybe you can just give me feedback next week about-
Sure, and that, and that sort of speaks as to why some of this was, because I'm trying to, I, I hear what you're saying, I just don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. So I want to make sure that we have exactly what, you know, that we, we think we can, a document that we can, that we can live with here, that encompasses all sorts of things as we get more narrowly, narrowly, narrowly defined.
I'm wondering if, if it's possible then to enumerate some of your other needs to be addressed at our next meeting, rather than work on them tonight? Because we have a mandatory cutoff, we cannot continue past 11:30, and we have two more items to go.
I only have one more, Dennis, and then I'm through.
Okay, thank you.
We did talk very briefly on active shooter scenarios and those types of situations, but I don't actually see anything in the SOP regarding that situation. Is there some, did I miss something in there about that?
So there is a section where they participate in all safety drills, and they are part of the, the team at the building related to safety, and I just have to find it. So under section seven, development of school safety plans, the SRO is going to work with the building principal regarding safety concerns. We would expect the, we have a district crisis team, so we would expect the SROs to be part of that. Deputy Chief Searls is there, and lieutenant, lieutenant, right, Sanders are members of that team, and then we will incorporate input from the SROs as part of that. So they, they are part of the school safety team. So that is on page 10.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, we don't speak specifically to intruder, but it would be all school safety planning, so we have crisis plans, which include intruder.
Okay. I think so, just make one final comment. Again, I want to reiterate, sorry, Dean. I just want to reiterate that-
I'm just amazed.
I, I know, I know, I just have, only have one final comment five times. I want to reiterate that I think that the intention is well-thought-out here as far as, the intention is not well-thought-out, but the intention is great, the intention is good. I think that everybody has come here with the right motivations, but I don't think that the process was done as inclusively as it could have been. I think that there's still quite a bit that needs to be added to this, to allow our concerned folks in the public to believe that we have their best interests at heart, just because there was not enough, and I know it's going to have to go back to the school board, because we're going to make enough changes to the IGA, they're going to have to approve it themselves. But as it stands, tonight I cannot support this document in its current form, I'll see what it comes back to, full council next week.
Okay. So there's a week of some modifications, and I think we're probably going to have to see an edited version of this with new language, and I'm not sure you'll be able to come up with a lot of new language.
And that won't be next week.
Couldn't possibly be.
I just said that to him.
All right.
That's not going to happen that quickly.
All right, so then, I'm not sure what to say about this, we're not going to be able to continue this into a final version next week, and we have, we may want to, you know, choose a time forward that we-
Let's, let's just go through our procedures.
All right.
And would be my suggestion, vote on the amendment, and then vote on the-
Now, we did accept the amendment.
Oh, we've accepted the amendment.
Well, now we're back to the entire document.
So, so I suggest that, that we vote on the full document. This still has to go to the full council.
Yes.
So there would be a chance, I don't know if this full document will, how this is going to fare in the vote we're about to take, but let's vote on it, and that will provide a context for the discussion in the full council. Would, would be my suggestion.
And Sharice.
Okay, I'd like to move the resolution number 29-
That's Marshall on the floor.
Oh, okay.
We're good with that.
Oh, well, then I'd like to-
Well, that would be me, but then also, Bill Brown.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have more discussion next week. I think, I'm convinced that we've, that staff has done a really good job trying to get this together. I think the objectives are good, everything, everyone has good intentions with this. I read through several of the research reports that were submitted from both sides, and, you know, all of them have caveats, and there's, there's certainly no strong message either way. They usually come out as, some, some work and some don't, and I think if you do it right, and make sure you don't mix up discipline with criminal matters, they tend to work. But they all also say that more study is needed, you need more longitudinal studies, not just comparisons and correlations across the different districts at different times. So it's still kind of a work in progress as far as how to fine-tune, I think, the SRO. I think, from my perspective, I'm, I haven't been in schools with that age student in a long time, I'm not going to start trying to second-guess what the staffing level should be. I think that's up to the school board and the school administration, I think. The way I'm looking at it is, is it, is it open and transparent? Are objectives pure? Do we have enough, enough information in operating procedures to make it, make a good effort? And we know there will be some adjustment as we go along. And is there a good review? Is there adequate review? And I think we've, we've touched on that, and kind of fixed some things we thought needed, needed beefing up tonight. So I'm comfortable with going forward with this tonight, and recommending it for approval. If there's anything that, you know, can be done to help, help Jared's case, and, you know, I think that would be great between now and then, if you can make some adjustments, if you, if you want to. If you want to withdraw it and hold it back for longer, you can, but I think I'm comfortable with going ahead for now, and, and recommending this for approval.
Okay, the city clerk.
And, and if you send this to council next week, you can still amend it, you can still discuss it, and if it's not ready, I'm sure they will report that it's not completely ready, discuss where they're at, and send it on to committee or council from there. But Eric was right, and Councilman Pickerson was correct, and just follow the process, and it will work.
We're just trying to send it to council.
All right. So then let's do the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, just one opposed. But we will send this forward to council, and we'll see the refinements and further considerations. All right, we got, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much.
You've, you've seen us at our worst.
No, I'm very blessed.
Thank you.
So we got two more things to talk about tonight. Ordinance number 2019-11-067, ordinance revising the annual budget, ordinance of budget amendment number two, omnibus. Elizabeth Hannah, if she's awake, would she please come forward?
Wake up, Elizabeth. This is basically just the budget amendment that makes the SRO program work in the budget, so this should travel with the previous item.
Yes, Marais will.
Can I make a motion that we move forward resolution number 2019-11-050R, resolution approving in, no, no, my bad, ordinance, can I restate that? Ordinance number 2019-11-067, and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number two, with a recommendation for approval to city council. Second.
Okay, and then Sharice has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that's, that's fine, one person says no. All right, but it's going to go forward and we'll see what happens next week. Okay, last item is a discussion on the resolution to support the IHS bid, which has to do with the Illinois high school basketball.
Yeah, this is the Illinois High School Association Boys State Basketball Tournament Visit Champaign County is leading an effort, again, to try to win the bid, and they're putting together a bid package. If you recall, Peoria, the tournament has been held in Peoria for the past 20 years or so, and periodically the communities try to get it back, so this is the part of that effort. I'm recommending to you, and again, this is no action tonight, this is simply discussion, that we budget $7,500 a year for the three fiscal years of this bid. Last time around, the city pledged $5,000 a year for five years, so our total overall pledge is somewhat smaller over a shorter period of time. The foundation, the money goes to the foundation, the IHSA foundation, which supports the non-revenue generating events and activities like scholastic bowl and band contests and debate drama and that sort of thing. And we're joining with U of I, Visit Champaign County, City of Champaign, City of Village of Savoy, Rantoul, there may be some other communities, I think St. Joe is giving a little as well. We expect in terms of impact on the community, you know, with additional people in the community, over, it's, over the weekend, we expect hotels, restaurants, retail outlets, gas stations to, to benefit from the visitors. It's also a great opportunity to showcase the community to people from all over the state, especially kids coming down for the first time, seeing the Assembly, State Farm Center, excuse me. So anyway, the item is, we're going to, we'll put it under new business next week for your vote, we'll have to suspend, we'll, we'll suspend the resolution on resolutions for that next week, and then letters of support are due December 10th, and the bid package has to be in by mid-January, so we are under some time constraints here.
Okay, well, thank you for that information.
For your thoughts over the next week.
All right, then apparently seeing no other business before us, we are adjourned.